Thanks so much. I'm going to call this reconvening of public hearing of Thursday, December 10th to order. Counsel, just make sure your videos are turned on so we can maintain quorum and we're a little short at the moment. I'm sure folks will join us, but important that we don't lose quorum. This meeting is being, is authorized under the ministerial order number M192, and as such, we're all participating by phone, following updated guidance issued on December 4th. In-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health officer order. Therefore, speakers who will be providing comments to counsel will be by phone and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes. Please note, if my connection is lost or any councillor's connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess until the connection is restored. Let's see. So if you are leaving the meeting, please let the clerk know. An email or verbally is fine, and then just let us know when you're coming back on. Video of any council member speaking, presentation of votes, results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can also listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out on @Vancityclerk on Twitter. So when speakers do speak, moderator will assist in patching them through, and then I can also help guide any presentations. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr?
Here.
Councillor De Genova. Councillor Frye?
Present.
Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick?
Present.
Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly? Councillor Kirby Young? The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks, clerks. First, we acknowledge we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people, and we thank them for their generosity to all who live on these lands, and want to thank our staff for everything they do to make our city run tiggety boo. Before we begin, I have some announcements. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @Vancityclerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. I will do my best to read out names and numbers as I go along so you can keep track. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to our online web form at vancouver.ca/public-hearing-comments. The link to that will also be tweeted out. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20-second delay, and to navigate through the slides in your presentation, please say next, and I'll help you along with that as you go. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. No sliding off into policy if you can help it. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. To summarize what was completed on December 2nd, council completed items 1 to 5 on the agenda. Today, we're going to start with item 6 and move to item 7. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the principal, improve in principle the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So we're going to move to item number 6, amendment to the rental housing stock official development plan. Now, just ask before we begin if any member wishes to declare a conflict of interest. 3, 2, 1. Okay, so we have no conflicts declared. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received. Go ahead, clerks.
There is an application by General Manager Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the rental housing stock official development plan to clarify the one-for-one replacement of existing rental housing. In RHS ODP, designated zoning districts may occur on a site within the same zoning district that has been rezoned to a CD1. This amendment will still require the existing rental housing to be replaced on a one-for-one basis in the same area to ensure no net loss of rental housing. The following correspondence have been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list, and we see the public comments. Two pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thanks very much. So first, if there are any speakers who wish to speak to this item, please call 1-833-3538610, followed by participant code 44615 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. Numbers on the live stream and on Twitter, and we have Jessie Singer from the, I always try to shorten these, from Urban Design and Sustainability on the phone to present the application. We do have speakers counsel, so we should move forward with this application. So please go ahead, Jessie Singer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening.
Hi, we can hear you.
Right. So my name is Jessie Singer, and I'm a planner in the Housing Policy Group. In this presentation, I'll provide some further detail on the proposed amendment to the rental housing stock official development plan, or ODP, beginning with some background to the ODP itself and its impact, before outlining the rationale for the amendment and the implications. Before starting the presentation, I want to note that this proposed amendment is related to a rezoning application for 349 East 6th Avenue, which is on tonight's agenda directly after this item, and the order is deliberate, as a legal review during the application process found that the application would contravene the rental housing stock ODP as the ODP is currently written, hence the need for this amendment. So as the amendment is required in order to enable consideration of the rezoning proposal, should the proposed ODP amendment not be approved in principle tonight, staff would remove the rezoning application from the agenda as it would contravene the ODP, and we wanted to make that connection for council upfront, but we'll get into more detail in the body of the presentation. So the rental housing stock ODP is an important tool to enable the retention and renewal of Vancouver's existing purpose-built rental housing stock. It does this by requiring one-for-one replacement of existing rental units in new developments of three or more units in certain RM, FM, and CD1-zoned areas of the city. The replacement rental units are required to be in the same zoning district as the existing rental building to achieve a known net loss of existing rental housing in the neighborhood. And you can see on the map, the areas where the ODP applies are in black, and approximately 78% of Vancouver's purpose-built rental housing stock is covered by the ODP currently. Important to note also, the ODP works alongside other renter protection measures, such as the tenant relocation and protection policy, which provides financial compensation and assistance to renters affected by redevelopment. And over the past decade, citywide, there has been a steady growth in rental housing in Vancouver driven by protection of existing rentals through measures such as the ODP and city programs to create new rental housing. The ODP has also been successful in protecting against the loss of existing purpose-built rental housing despite redevelopment pressures. The graph on the slide shows the relative number of rental housing units demolished in ODP areas going back to the early days of rental protection regulations in the 1980s. And as you can see, with successive amendments and strengthening of regulations, the number of units demolished has been significantly reduced, and we are actually seeing a reversal of rental loss with a net gain of approximately 3,500 rental units in the ODP areas between 2010 and 2018. So as it is currently written, the ODP requires one-for-one replacement either on the site or in the same zoning district. This means that currently, replacement of existing rental units on a one-for-one basis could occur on a site other than the site that contained the original rental housing, but is still in the same neighborhood. The intent behind this is to enable consideration of development proposals that can build new rental units without requiring eviction of existing tenants while the new building is constructed, while also ensuring that existing units are replaced one-for-one in the same neighborhood, so there's no net loss of rental units overall. To show how this proposed, to show what this proposed amendment would mean in practice, the next slides use the rezoning application for 349 East 6th as an illustrative example. So that proposal involves two sites. One is 325 East 6th, shown on the map in orange, and 349 East 6th, shown on the map in green. So the orange site contains an existing social housing building with 36 units, which triggers the ODP rental replacement requirement. The green site contains an existing strata building, which does not trigger the rental housing or rental replacement requirement, as there are no existing rental units on site. The application for 349 East 6th proposes replacing the existing 36 social housing units on the green strata site rather than on the same site as the original units were located, i.e. the orange site on the map. Now, both sites are currently zoned RM4, and so, under a development permit process, this application would comply with the ODP as it is currently written, because the rental replacement would occur on a site in the same zoning district as the original rental units, in this case RM4. However, under a rezoning process, the situation changes. When a project goes through a rezoning process, the existing zoning is changed from its original zoning to a CD1 or comprehensive development zone. So as shown on the map, should a rezoning be approved for the green site where the rental replacement would occur, then that site would no longer be zoned RM4. It would now be a CD1 zone. So under the existing ODP language, this situation would now technically be in contravention of the ODP despite no material changes to the proposal, but rather due to the regulatory process which changes the zoning of the green site to a different zone than the original. So therefore, it was identified that a technical amendment to the ODP was needed to clarify the rental replacement situations that can be considered under that policy. So the full text of the proposed amendment is included in the draft bylaws appended to the council report, but the implications of amending the ODP language is to specify that rezoning proposals, which require a change of zone due to the city's regulatory process, can be considered. And it's important to note that the proposed amendment maintains the requirement to firstly, replace existing rental units on a one-for-one basis, so there is no net loss of existing rental housing, and second, that the replacement units must still be located within the same neighborhood as the original units to ensure there is a diversity of rental housing options across the city. And as mentioned in my opening remarks, our legal department has confirmed that this amendment is required in order for the rezoning proposal at 349 East 6th to be considered, as it is at variance with the current ODP language, as illustrated in the previous slides. So in conclusion, staff recommend approval of the proposed amendment as it maintains the core requirements of the rental housing stock ODP by ensuring that existing rental housing units are replaced on a one-for-one basis in the same neighborhood as the original units. Staff see this as a minor technical amendment to clarify the types of rental replacement situations enabled under the ODP, which will enable, in the short term, consideration of a rezoning application at 349 East 6th Avenue, which proposes to both replace existing social housing units, add new social housing units, and does so without requiring the eviction or displacement of existing social housing tenants. And in the longer term, it allows for consideration of a future rezoning application, which may propose rental replacement scenarios that avoid tenant displacement or have less impact on tenants through the redevelopment process. So that concludes the presentation on the proposed amendment. There is a note on the amendment wording that Grant Murray from Legal Services will explain, and after that, staff will be available for questions.
Thanks so much.
Hi, this is Grant Murray. The posted version of the proposed amendment to the district schedules contains a small error. That bylaw can be found on the last page of the staff report. There are references in that bylaw to this ODP in sections 2, 3, and 4 of the draft bylaw, and it should say "the" the RHS ODP. This is a result of my error. We originally drafted the language to amend the ODP, so the reference was this ODP. When it got translated into the other district schedules, I used the same language. It should have been changed to "the." One of my sharp-eyed colleagues pointed this out to me yesterday. If council adopts the recommendations, the bylaws will be brought forward for enactment with those changes. We consider it to be quite small. Council's permitted to make changes to a proposed bylaw based on representations made at the public hearing. Legal staff will consider approval of the recommendations as authority to bring forward for enactment bylaws that address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, we do have a couple of speakers, but you're more than welcome to ask questions to staff now. We have no applicant, so I have councillor Swanson. We have three speakers who are on the line to speak to this council. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes for staff.
Yeah, my first question is, do staff anticipate that this change will apply in any other circumstances than the one that comes after it tonight?
Over to staff.
Hi, councillor Swanson. This is Jessie Singer. We currently only have the one application, 349 East 6th, which this ODP amendment would apply to. However, as mentioned in the presentation, it would allow for a future rezoning application that may propose something similar. However, we do not currently have an application, another application.
Okay, so what's wandering through my brain is, could this unleash more demos of existing rentals that would be replaced with privately-owned expensive rentals, so that we'd lose affordability? Is that something that this amendment could do?
Thank you for the question, councillor Swanson. That is an issue of concern for staff. We would say no, this amendment does not open the door and send mass redevelopment of existing rental, because the ODP itself does not give development rights. So we are not as part of this proposed amendment, giving, say, additional height or density in the ODP areas to incent someone to want to go and, say, purchase a rental building to demolish and replace on a separate site. It is merely clarifying the cases for rezoning where we could consider a replacement scenario, but it does not give any further development rights to an applicant that would be governed by other land use policy as well. It applies only to rezonings, so there is the added layer of review and council consideration that any future proposals would have to go through.
What if, would it be possible to amend the recommendation so that it applied only to replacement social housing?
We could. Oh.
So sorry, this is Ed Natcho, senior planner in housing policy in the planning department. For sure, council can propose that amendment, should they wish to do that. I would just offer some comments in regards to that, you know, that idea. So that proposed amendment would result in a narrowing of the options for rental replacement that is currently possible and intended under the rental housing stock ODP. So right now, you know, under a DP, you could, for market rental projects, replace in a different site in the same zoning district. So I think that could lead to some unintended consequences. So if council wanted to propose to do that, I think we would like to do some further analysis to better understand the implications citywide and across various scenarios. For instance, that amendment would eliminate the possibility of rental replacement in a separate building for a below-market rental project. So that's a private development, but you know, if there were below-market rental projects, that would eliminate that possibility.
But a private development wouldn't be below market, right?
But I guess there's a possibility of that in the West End, right? Since the change to the issues report was made.
There is.
So, and then I think that one other thing to note is that enabling the change the staff has put forward right now provides an additional rental replacement scenario that reduces the impact of redevelopment on renters, whether they are living in social housing or a market rental, as it could reduce the need for multiple moves by the tenant. So, you know, having two buildings to work with means that you don't need, a tenant doesn't need to move to a temporary, you know, accommodation while they're waiting for the new building to be built. So it can minimize the...
I can see how that works in the coming up rezoning application, but if it were being, if the building were being demolished for just plain old expensive rental housing, the tenant probably wouldn't be able to afford to move in there anyway. That's my concern.
Okay, thanks. So there's time for debate, councillor Swanson, but I'm going to move on with questions to staff. Councillor Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is just a follow-up to Mr. Murray's presentation to us. And does the change from this RHS ODP to "the" require any movement on the part of council? It's not in a yellow memo, but is it just, I'm trying to figure out if it was just, it will be automatic, so we don't have to do anything about that? You're just informing us?
Yes. Sorry, it's Grant Murray again. That's the plan. We are allowed to, or council is allowed to amend bylaws in accordance with any representations made, and our position is that this is a representation that's been made. If you to approve the recommendations, we could do that without any further ado.
Ah, because you've informed us. Okay, that's great. No problem. My second question, in the language of the recommendation, it, in the first clause, it talks about the, if it was rezoned to allow for a replacement housing and is adjacent to the contiguous area of the zoning district of the site. Does that mean if an area goes through, or a site goes through a change to become a CD1 zone, that it would be adjacent to the CD1 zone? Is that what that means?
Hello, councillor Carr. This is Jessie Singer again. I admit the language is a bit clunky, because we wanted to be very specific of when these, this could be considered. And so if I understand your question correctly, it's, the intent of the language is to say that you can, through a rezoning, replace existing rental on another site that has been zoned to a CD1, but it must be within, I'll call it, the same pocket of the original zoning district. So if the original zoning district is an RM or an FM that is in the ODP, the replacement units would have to be in that same pocket of RM, not, say, across the city. And that was intentional, because we, one of the outcomes we want to avoid is having someone, say, want to replace rental that's existing on the West Side, say, on a less expensive site on the East Side. We don't, we don't want that. We want to make sure that there is a continuum of rental choice across all neighborhoods, and so that's why that rather clunky language was included, but that is the intent.
Got it. So just to make sure I'm clear, when you say adjacent to the contiguous area of the zoning districts of the site, it is the zoning district of the site before it's changed to a CD zoning?
Exactly right.
All right. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Carr. Councillor Hardwick?
Thank you. There has been general concern in the community is that if this is approved as proposed by staff, that the bylaw amendments could result in the loss of older three-story walk-up apartments in neighborhoods across the city. Also questioning that the proposed bylaw amendments enable the eviction and displacement of current tenants and the demolition of existing fully occupied affordable housing to be replaced with new rentals at higher rental costs. So the question back is to staff, have we considered these potential risks, impacts, and unintended consequences?
Over to staff.
Thank you for that question. Thanks for the question, councillor Hardwick. Yes, we have, we are very cognizant of, you know, the rental need in the city and the difficulties that existing renters are having when they do face, you know, eviction. How we're protecting against this in this proposal is that this amendment applies only to a rezoning application. So it would have, in order to bring forward an application using this new language, it would be only on a site that had a rezoning in place that allows for it to occur. And currently in the ODP areas, there is very limited, ODP areas that have rezoning policies. The ones that we can think of and give to council is in the West End, and then some areas of Grandview, Woodland. So it's not going to apply widespread across the city. And again, just to maybe bring forward the point, the ODP amendment change is not giving additional development rights, so it is not proposing to increase heights and densities across the city in ODP zones that will continue to be regulated by existing zoning.
So as a corollary of that, so this will be conditional on a case-by-case basis? There's no need for broad concern?
Yes, that is how we are seeing this.
Well, I'm sure there'll be people, they'll be happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't have any other questions, so I'm going to move to the speakers' list. Let's me pull this up here. Oops. Okay, so, let's see. We have Mark White from the Senior Advisory Committee member. Mr. White?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Actually, I have up to eight, don't I, as I'm speaking on behalf of the committee?
You have to have two other folks with you.
Oh, okay, that's time. But I should be able to do it in five. That's fine.
Okay, great.
So thank you, Mayor and councillor, on behalf of the Senior's Advisory Committee. I'm speaking in favor of the amendment and recommendation of city staff. An important goal of the housing subcommittee for the Senior's Advisory Committee is to provide realistic and evidence-based advice to council and staff to support the creation and protection of safe, healthy, food-secure, sustainable, and livable communities for all seniors living in Vancouver. We support the city staff-proposed amendment, as it will pave the way for future projects that aim to reduce temporary or permanent displacement of tenants. This recognizes the important role of community and the community and neighborhoods play in seniors' wellbeing, including their relationships with primary care, social workers, caregivers, community volunteers, local libraries, and familiarity with neighbors and stores. Affordable housing is only really sustainable in safe, healthy, food-secure communities. There is a proviso with this support that we think that council should consider in the future planning process, and that is the replacement facility will be, that in this case, the replacement facility will be providing the depth and range of affordability congruent with current tenants, and extends meaningful affordability to the broader community. We recognize that this motion does not, as it stands, establish appropriate affordability principles and minimum thresholds to ensure that we continue to both replace and expand housing affordability relevant to 27% of the population in Vancouver, whose households earn less than $35,000. In conclusion, SAC supports this amendment, however believes that revisions to the Vancouver Plan should strengthen and expect better than one-to-one replacement. As well as I mentioned in my comments on the previous motion regarding Brightside, is the need to increase accessibility... is the need to increase accessibility requirements for both market and non-market housing. Increasing accessibility and accessible pathways reduces forced social isolation of seniors and people with disabilities from visiting neighbors and friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, uh, for coming in. I don't see, uh, questions for you. Just want to say how much we appreciate your, uh, your participation in both this meeting and, uh, on the advisory committee, so thanks so much for sharing your, uh, your ideas. Um, I'm going to move now, council, to the next speaker. And we have, uh, Alicia Myshock.
Good evening, Mayor Kennedy, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to address this item tonight in these interesting times. My name is Alyssa Myshock. I am a former, longtime resident of Kitsellano, where I was a renter over the years in three-story, um, older three-story walk-ups, three of them to be, uh, precise. I am a current resident of Mount Pleasant and owner of a condo in 1974 walk-ups. I was a participant in the Mount Pleasant Community Planning Process, which resulted in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan 2010 and the subsequent Mount Pleasant Implementation Plan 2013. I happened upon this minor bylaw amendment somewhat by chance, and out of curios- curiosity started to read it. As I read it, my concerns grew. Through, as termed in the reference report, land swap arrangements, this proposed bylaw amendment to the rental housing stock ODP appears to open up the possibility for elimination of existing affordable low-rise rental, low-rise housing stock, both rental and missing middle ownership in all of the city's RM neighborhoods. The case for this minor amendment to the rental housing stock ODP is built upon a unique situation for the rezoning, rezoning application at 3496th Avenue, in that the existing rental at 325 E6 is longstanding seniors' social housing and not common rental stock. An obvious win-win is that the community gets new social rental housing and that the developer partner receives a prime piece of real estate to build, we would presume, market condos. I think it's worth noting that in the urban design panel minutes, um, for the site at 349, um, there is a sentence which says, "Staff also notes preliminary tests have been concluded that shows it is possible for another tower of a comparable floor plate to be developed to the west while maintaining approximately 80-foot distance from its proposed towers." So we are talking at this point, I believe, two towers potentially coming up in the neighborhood. The case for this, or, sorry, this prompts the question, why, given this unique situation, is such a, is such a broad stroke amendment being proposed that would have far-reaching implications for all RM districts citywide without restrictions or prequalifications on type of rental unit replacement to justify a land swap deal? And what guarantee is provided that any new rental housing resulting from this land swap bylaw, bylaw amendment will provide affordable rental units? Mayor Kennedy, councilors, why is this brand stroke, broad stroke bylaw amendment to the rental housing stock ODP being recommended as the city is in the initial stages of the citywide Vancouver planning process? Coincidentally, I spent my afternoon in the SFU Public Square planning for a post-pandemic city presentation, um, along with, I think, most, if not all, of the council and Gil Kelly, the city's chief planner, who led the discussion off. There was an air of community and positivity. The phrase "co-create the future" was put forth, the requirement to turn to neighbors to ask where does Dancity go, and the statement was made that we need to listen to all voices. No, really listen, even the dissenting ones. And the word transparency came up more than once. Is this the way, is the way that this minor amendment has been put forth in the bylaw really transparent to the citizens of this, of this, of the city and really transparent to the process of the Vancouver, Vancouver Plan? Are we really engaging our citizens in deciding how our communities are shaped and densified? The entire focus of this amendment and conversation has been on tenants and rentals, but there are people who want to get in to housing stock, who want to buy these older three-story walk-ups. This afternoon's presentation, SFU presentation, talked about neighborhoods with diversity. If we eliminate the people, the missing middle, where's the diversity in our neighborhoods? What are the far-reaching future implications to affordable home ownership and affordable rental opportunities that may result from this amendment? And what impact will unrestricted land swap deals have on our city's livable low-rise neighborhoods? Is this truly a minor amendment or one which requires further investigation and qualification? My question is, why can't the individual situation for the proposed rezoning which is coming up, why can't this be taken out of a complete amendment to the bylaw and treated as a special case? I am truly concerned about what is happening in our city and what is happening with the planning process and what it means to the community plans in place and what it means to the entire process for the Vancouver, Vancouver Plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, uh, sharing your thoughts tonight on this, uh, bylaw and, um, amendment, uh, and there are no questions for you, so I am going to move on to the last registered speaker, who is Stephen Boas.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Stewart and, uh, council. My name's Stephen Boas. I live in, uh, Grandview Woodland. I used to live in Mount Pleasant and I was on the Mount Pleasant Implementation Committee with Alyssa Myshock, and I agree with everything, uh, that she just said, uh, and I am familiar with the Mount Pleasant Plan. I live in Grandview Woodland, but I am a renter in RM4. Before I get into the details and the stress about the quasi-judicial body, I will just point out that the procedure bylaw, section 2.3, says that public hearings have to begin at 6:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and this public hearing actually began last week on Wednesday, so I'm concerned that the procedure bylaw is not being followed for this, uh, a public hearing. Uh, the other concern that I have, uh, regarding the ODP is the fact that last November, 26 in 2019, council told staff and approved the motion to include C2 protections, C2, C2B, C2C, C2C1 zoning districts, and report back, uh, and this was approved, and I don't see the C2 protections in this amendment, so I think that's, that's a very big problem the C2 protection should be in. Now, regarding this, um, proposal, I'm concerned with the way that, um, 349 E6 is the driving force here, and really what, if you want to just take care of that one special case, you can make a tiny little change to this ODP that is specific to these two sites, 349 E6 and the adjacent site, and nowhere else. Because what this proposes to do is it can potentially commoditize protected housing stock, it could be horse trading within zones, there could be more speculative pressures, there could be swaps, you know, maybe a street and a lot on one zone is more desirable on another one with one-to-one replacement, like, there's a whole can of worms that would be opened up if this, uh, amendment were to be passed as is, and I, I think it, uh, should not be passed as is. If council really wants to, um, enable the next item, they should consider just doing a site-specific, time-limited amendment between RM4 and CD1, just for those two sites, and that takes care of that issue, because essentially staff are saying, oh, you know, you have to do this, or you're not going to get this, this rezoning and all this other housing. And I'm also concerned about 349 E6, because that doesn't follow the Grand, uh, with the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, 4.87 FSR, and 127 feet doesn't follow it. And, uh, but back to this, if you want to enable that, you just have to make that little change, and, um, also concerned about the fact that the entire city, like, is almost affected, like, so many zones, from the West End to Kitsellana, the Grandview Woodland, all over, and, uh, the scenarios that I was just looking at and the horse trading that's possible is, is far-ranging. Uh, staff are very much mistaken that this is a minor amendment, it's major, and, and there is a lot of concern here. And I don't think even the average person knows about the implications, and we don't even maybe know of all the implications, if we look at the various scenarios that could be possible here, so I would urge council not to approve, uh, this ODP modification as proposed. I would urge council to include the C2 protections in this ODP if you amend it. And on the last weekend, I actually met someone who was a renter in C2 on Commercial Drive and got kicked out before the, and the, the building got torn down and there was no replacement rental, so I know it's very real, and I'm a, a renter myself, and I'm in a zone that could be affected by, uh, this policy change, so those are, uh, my concerns. I don't know how much time I have left, my, about that limit, or...
Uh, no, you have a minute, but you also have a, a question from Councilor Hardwick.
Okay, so I'll, I'll wrap it up, because I know you've got a lot to, um, go through, but, uh, yeah, tho- those, those are my concerns, so I will just reiterate that I, I see the need for, uh, trying to limit it if you're just trying to enable the, the next, um, item on the agenda and, uh, include the C2 protections that were approved by council last year, and I'm very disappointed that that hasn't actually been put into policy yet, and I'm concerned about the fact that the procedure bylaw isn't being followed, so, uh, that's, those are my concerns, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Hardwick. You have up to five minutes, uh, for questions. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Boas, um, for speaking with us. Did you hear my questions of staff just a little while ago?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, you, you were asking about the broad, uh, the concerns and, uh, various walk-ups, yes.
And did you hear staffs, and sir, really, if they had considered the potential risks, impacts, and unintended consequences?
Uh, yeah, I, I heard, uh, the answers, and I disagree with staff, I think, um, I have a degree in landscape architecture, I've been, you know, looking at this for a long time in, in urban planning in the city, and, and I think there are so many, uh, issues that, uh, can be opened up here, and, uh, this is major.
So you disagree with staff. If I were to, uh, have any further questions of staff, are there any points in particular that, uh, that should, I mean, that should be addressed? You've talked about, you know, why not limit it just to this one instance? Why not make a site-specific amendment? Is that the crux of it?
That, and, and to include the C2 protections, and I will also say that maybe in this case, it's not just staff that should be consulted, maybe ask Ray Spaxman or, or Ann McAfee or, you know, someone else, like, to, to get an outside opinion, because, you know, it's, it's the word of the public against staff, and, and I think purity in this case, it would help to, to get a third party to, to look at it and, and decide whether this is major and, and look at some of the scenarios.
Okay. Thanks very much.
And actually, my question is, and, uh, a question for staff would, you know, if you could perhaps consider it, would be, can this ODP be amended on a site-specific basis to just take care of this and can they add the C2?
Well, I did ask in my questions if things could be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, and the answer that I received was yes.
Okay, well, I would, uh, as a resident of Vancouver, I, I would really support, uh, going that route, then do case-by-case.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, that's it for questions, Mr. Boas. Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, um, so, uh, that's it for, uh, registered speakers, council, and, um, and I'm just going to call the number, uh, first call, 1-833-353-8610, code 44615, hashtag to get on the list. The number's on Twitter and on the live stream. Uh, I'm going to ask the clerks if there are any folks on the line.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no, there is no one further on the line for this item.
Thanks. I'm going to ask you again in a second, because I'm reading for my second time, second call. Uh, the number's on Twitter and on the live stream, uh, participant code 44615, hashtag. Anybody on the line, clerks?
No new speakers for this item, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks so much. I'm going to read my third and final time, and then we'll take a break until 10:27. Um, 1-833-353-8610, code 44615, hashtag. Uh, this is the third and final call, and we'll come back in, uh, at 6:50 to see if there are any speakers, and then move on for, uh, debate and decision. Thanks very much, council. We'll see you in five.
Here?
Yeah, just making sure we've got all of council back. I'm just looking on the screen here. See, three of us. There's four, five. Let's wait for Councilor Kerr. Oh, there's Councilor Fry. Great. Okay, we got quorum. So, um, I, anybody else on the line? Clerks?
I'm just checking, Mayor Stewart.
Great, thanks.
We are, we're just checking, we do have somebody on the line, but we're not sure if, if it's for this item. If you could give me a moment, please.
Okay.
It's just taking a moment to check with the individual.
No problem.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we do have another speaker on the line.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's Janice, this is Janice Reed, and I live in Mount Pleasant. I'm actually speaking for the next item, but in listening to the previous two speakers, I had some questions, because I don't really, like many people in the neighborhood, don't really understand what all of this means. So can you just answer, explain to me if I've got this right? Is this amendment, the purpose of this amendment, in order to constrain the new development at the end of the block to, or no, I don't really understand it. Is it to allow them to change the zoning somehow? And then I was wondering, what effect does this have on the adjacent site?
So, in this portion of the public hearing, we, the council hears from you, from the public, and then we may ask you questions, but it doesn't really work the other way around, because it's a quasi-judicial body. So really, we're here to hear your statements, not to answer questions. However, council can ask staff questions later that may relate to your queries.
Okay, so I will make a statement, because I don't, I don't support the rezoning. I feel that that housing that was there was providing rental units, and it fit into the character of the neighborhood. In seeing that, it was kind of shocking, actually, to see that they were willing to put in a 12-story building there when it was a three-story building. A six-story building would have been less of a shock, but also, we're leaving questions as to what is going to happen to the adjacent site, like what's being planned for that, for that site?
Well, those questions, we do have a presentation coming up on the next, on the actual application after this, after this amendment, so that'll probably answer some of your questions.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Clerks, is there anybody? Thanks. Clerks, any question, anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, yes, we have another caller on the line. We do not have the name, but we have a caller.
Thanks. Hi, caller. Could you just let me know what your name is, and whether you're a resident of Vancouver?
I am a resident of Van... Hello, my name's Sarah Moffett. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead.
Oh, hello, my name's Sarah Moffett. I am a resident of Vancouver. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I've been interested in listening to this, about this 349. I feel the same as the previous resident. It's quite a shock to see a 12-story suggested building erected in such a small, low-rise neighborhood. I know there's gonna be another presentation, but I don't know if anybody's considered the environmental impacts in all of this process. I don't speak all this language. I work in the film industry, however, I do, you know, am an advocate for, you know, Mother Nature and everything else. There's a huge flight path of birds that fly from Burnaby Lake over to the ocean, right over these buildings, at a very low, low, you know, low height, every morning and every evening. And so what my concern is, is that if a 12-story building is erected once in this neighborhood, it's going to open up opportunities for that to happen again and again, in effect altering the natural habitat of the wildlife that we have around here. So, it's not just a few birds. It's like a massive migration every single day.
Just, I am just gonna stop you there for a second. These comments are probably, so we're on a very specific, as it's a quasi-judicial hearing here, we're really only supposed to discuss the item that's in front of us, which is a small by-law amendment. However, it sounds like your comments are probably best addressed on the next presentation, which would be the actual form of the building that's being considered. Does that make sense?
Sure, thanks.
Okay, thanks so much. Clerks, do we have somebody else on the line as well?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we have another caller.
Okay, thanks so much. If you could just state your name, and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, and then we can hear your statement.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the city moderator speaking. There are actually no additional new callers for this item.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, moderator. Okay, council, so I think that's it for speakers on this item, and now that we've, there are no more speakers, and there's no public comments received after 5:00 PM today, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments and move on to decision. Just wondering if staff have any closing comments before we go to questions to staff?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. We can comment on a couple of the questions that were raised. There was a question around the C2 work, I believe, and to just inform council that that work is ongoing, and we are planning to bring it forward to council. However, it was not included in this ODP amendment, because it is a more substantive change. This change clarifies what is already enabled under the ODP, but the C2 work actually proposes to extend the ODP to a whole new zone across the city. And also, we are doing a consultation on that currently, and so that is why it was not included in this amendment.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Councillor, it's Dan Garrison, the Assistant Director of Housing Policy. I would just add one other point to the questions around the applicability of this broadly, and any risks that it may entail to the protection of the rental stock. I can say we in Housing Policy take the rental housing stock official development plan extremely seriously since 2007, when it was expanded citywide. It has been our most important rental protection tool, and we would, I can assure you, not be bringing this change forward if we thought that there were going to, it was going to introduce any risks that were beyond our control to the existing rental housing stock. The way that this works in terms of process and the additional protection is there, because this only really applies to rezonings. Rezonings in rental housing stock ODP areas are only considered where there's existing council policy to do so, such as the areas of the West End in the Berard-Thurlo corridor, for example. And so that's an additional layer of protection. In that rezoning process, of course, any rezoning would go all the way through the public process, would go through a public hearing, would come to council. So, we're confident that the change that's proposed tonight is a very minor technical amendment that would enable the kinds of rental replacement projects that we would like to see, and would not create the opportunity for the kinds of rental replacement projects that are of concern to us, and of course, to council and the public. So I would just end it there. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thanks so much. There are questions, though. I have councillor Kirby Young on the list for questions. Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks very much, and thanks to staff for the presentation. That was helpful. I have three questions that's gonna relate to process and procedure for clarification, I think both for myself, because I know there's an amendment coming forward, as well as for speakers. The first one is that if council were not to approve this proposed item set in the amendment, would that preclude us from hearing item seven on 349 E6, which is following on this agenda?
Over to staff.
Thank you for the question, councillor. Yes, we have been told by legal that that is what would happen. As the ODP is currently written, the proposal for 349 E6 does contravene the language, and so we would not want to consider that proposal that is, you know, it variants with our policy.
Okay, so that's helpful. Follow-up to that question, my follow-up is, was there an option procedurally or legally for council to consider the 349 E6 application, and for staff to have made that conditional upon council subsequently approving a site-specific ODP amendment?
Dan Garrison chiming in. Maybe I'll just chime in, Jessie, because we did consider the process, and a consequential amendment is a possibility in a case like this. However, because this site, or this amendment to the ODP is beyond the site, typically, it's not our standard practice to consider amendments to official development plans that have applicability across a range of sites, on the back, sort of, if you will, of a single-site application. So that's one of the challenges, is two separate reports.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that it's not standard practice, but is it a possibility? I'm not advocating, I'm just asking, because I think we're gonna have to walk through this. So, is it a possibility?
Yes, it's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. And then my third question is, if council were to pass this proposed report set in the ODP amendment as it is, which is not site-specific, are you anticipating that we would receive other applications that would be in a sort of, in a similar situation? Enable other applications, or are there others that you are aware of, or would might anticipate?
We are not aware right now of any applications currently. However, as mentioned in the presentation, it would provide the legal basis to consider future applications that may propose a similar type of rental replacement scenario on a different site than was originally containing the rental units.
Okay, that's helpful. I'm gonna leave it there for now for time, but thank you, I really appreciate the answers.
Thanks, council. We've got councillors Swanson, Fry, Bly and Dominado on the list. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, would it be possible to make this amendment so it only applied to that site on E6?
Over to staff.
Thank you for the question, councillor Swanson. Yes, we have had a chance to confer with our legal colleagues, and I believe the answer is that it is legally possible.
And what would be the advantage of doing it the way that you're proposing, over doing it so that it was site-specific?
I think for this one, we approached it with the idea that council has been quite clear with us that your priority is to consider innovative and different scenarios for both renewing existing aging rental housing buildings, but also keeping, maintaining tenancy and maintaining renter stability. And so, when we looked at this amendment, we saw the potential, as, you know, alluded to through previous questions, that while this is not a typical scenario, and we probably cannot anticipate, you know, a flood of applications, by making this amendment apply kind of broadly, as it were, it would enable future applications to come forward and do a similar type of proposal, of course, through the rezoning process that council would consider, and, you know, the public process would happen. So I think we thought that the first, you know, doing the amendment this way would, you know, be the gateway to allow for future consideration, rather than doing kind of every time a potential proposal comes, we would have to do another amendment, and another amendment, and another.
But this one is for social housing, and probably, would it be fair to say that future proposals, if they do come forward under this, would probably be for privately-owned housing?
It is difficult to say what a future proposal might be. However, we are concerned, you know, not only with, you know, reducing impacts of redevelopment on social housing tenants, we're also interested in ensuring that we can mitigate displacement impacts on even market rental tenants. And as mentioned before, I believe my colleague, Anna Choit, mentioned that a potential scenario could be that someone brings forward an application where the replacement units are below-market units, as has been enabled through, you know, an issues report that lets council consider privately-owned but below-market rental units. So there, I think, a variety of types of rental replacement that could be considered beyond social housing.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, councillor Swanson. Councillor Fry, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. So, curious, the backstory to us getting here, was this amendment to the ODP inspired by the forthcoming project that we're about to consider immediately after this? Or is this something that the industry has been, has been asking for? Is this something that we've workshopped for a while, and there's a sort of demonstrable need? And if there is a demonstrable need, where else might we anticipate this sort of playing out? Do we have a sense of where there may be other opportunities to avail this amended ODP?
Thank you for the question. Yes, so, as mentioned in the presentation, currently, as the ODP is written today, this type of scenario is allowed under a development permit process. And so the intent to let us consider rental replacement scenarios where we could minimize impacts on tenants has been sort of, I guess, in the intent of the ODP, but the reason for this amendment, and the reason we're calling it a technical amendment, is because when you read, you know, the word by word, in this case, for rezoning, you know, because we're changing it from an RM4 to a CD1, the existing language that says rental replacement must occur on the site or in the same zoning district, that's where the kind of technicality came in, and law informed us that the existing language just wasn't explicit enough to let us consider this application at 349 E6.
Right, okay, so has this been an issue for other projects in the past that have been challenged this way, or is this the first time we've really encountered it?
Yes, this, sorry, I must have missed that last half of your question. Yes, this is the first time that it's kind of come to the forefront, and so it was through, actually, the standard application review process of the application for 349 E6 that kind of triggered, it involved a legal review, and that's when our colleagues, you know, raised the flag that this needed clarification. And then when staff took that as a technical amendment, and then considered the implications, it was our thought that we would make the amendment apply to rezonings, such that if another proposal were to come forward in a similar vein, we would then have the legal basis to bring it to council for them to consider.
Okay, that's super helpful. And on the last bit, with another proposal in a similar vein, do we have any anticipation of how many other proposals of a similar vein there may be potentially, just based on our existing zoning maps and that kind of thing?
So, this is Anna Choit, and I would say, over the last 10 years, we've had a handful of inquiries on this type of, this type of scenario. A lot of, some of the discussion has been under existing zoning. Typically, I would say these projects haven't really gone ahead, because they're challenging in implementation. And we know that in the West End, there was some talk about a couple of sites, but I don't think that those have gone anywhere since the change in the market. So, I think there haven't been any formal applications that we know of right now, except for that one, and we've had, I would say, just a small handful of this kind of scenario come up the last 10 years.
So, thanks, Ms. Cho. So then, in your opinion, to the suggestion that this is a big game-changer, do you think that this is, or this isn't?
I think that this does something that the rental housing stock ODP originally intended for. It has always intended for replacement to be in the same neighborhood. You know, it's just this technical clarification we needed for this rezoning. I don't think it's a game changer. What I think it does is it allows more flexibility for rental replacement options, and ones that will reduce the impact on tenants. So, I think that's what it does. This subject of rental displacement minimizing, you know, the impact on renters and the existing stock, I mean, as you all know, it's a huge topic right now, and it is something that we want to do, and will be doing more work on as part of the Broadway Plan, you know, to look more fulsomely at this whole issue. But right now, in the context of this project, the 349 E6 coming up, you know, it came up as part of that proposal, so we wanted to make that change.
Thanks, Ms. Cho, Ms. Singer. That's both been very helpful. That's both been very helpful and illuminating. Thank you. I'm good, thanks, mayor.
Sorry, I was on mute. Councillor Bly, up to, up to five minutes.
Thanks, and I have a very quick follow-up question. I've sort of been thinking about the fact that this came up through the pre-application inquiry that we've now, this year, earlier this year, made not mandatory. I'm just wondering, is this the kind of thing, is this a circumstance where staff would be concerned that a complicated, sort of what seems to be complicated but simple legal technicality within our bylaws could have somebody sort of go all the way through to a full application and then find we've got a backtrack? I just want to hear from staff on, are there any sort of significant concerns around the pre-application inquiry no longer being mandatory, and this type of technicality getting in the way? And much further down the process, I guess, is my question.
Hi, it's councillor, you are the McNeil, senior planner with the rezoning centre. It's an important question, and it's important to note that this project was benefited from the letter of inquiry process because it allowed staff to vet out and scope these issues. If the applicants had chosen to move right into a rezoning application, they would have done so with great risk and could have considerably lost that amount of money they spent on consultants. And we would not have been able to determine whether we could accept it until that pre-scoping had happened. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, and I kind of got that feeling, actually. So what's, what's staff's recommendation back to council or the process applicants? How are we, how are we able to, if at all, mitigate this risk? How broad are these technicalities within our bylaws? And sort of like, level of concern here is what I'm trying to pick up on. It's a very good answer, I do appreciate you answered my question exactly, so just further to that.
Councillor, it's Dan Garrison, maybe I'll just chime in, because I think, you know, broadly, the development process and the regulatory regime is, is complex, you're right. And so it's a difficult question to answer across the broadness of the continuum of that. But in, in terms of this O D P, it's been one of the, one of the important things about the consistency of the city's approach to this O D P over a very long time, has been that the development industry is very aware of, of the regulatory challenges with projects that are covered by the rental housing stock O D P and the requirement for things like rental replacement tenant protection or relocation policies. And so that's one of the kinds of checks and balances here, is this has been one of the longstanding protection policies that's been in place for a long time, and the industry is quite aware of the requirements related to it.
So the hope would be that if they're going to do something within the rental housing O D P, that they would perhaps just go through that letter of inquiry, just to make sure that they were not going to miss anything?
That's correct, and we, we spend quite a bit of time in your housing group answering questions from the industry about the rental housing stock O D P, so there are lines through the inquiry process and directly in the, to the housing group on these issues.
Okay, I appreciate that, I'll leave it there for now, thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't see any councillors on the queue, so can we have somebody move this recommendation, please?
Removed, councillor Bly.
Thank you.
Councillor Carr.
Oh, I think I heard councillor Frye, so I'm going to move to the main queue for debate. Councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I just, I did circulate an amendment, but I'm not going to introduce it because of the assurances from Mr. Garrison, and because if there is another proposal at another site, a rezoning would be required, and we'd get another kick at the can. I do think that we need to spend as much time protecting affordability as we do, as we spend time creating new units. And I would feel better if this only applied to the next project on our agenda, or if it only applied to social housing projects. But hopefully, we'll be able to decide that on a one-by-one basis, and then we can speed this next project along.
Thank you councillor Swanson. Councillor Bly.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to speak in support and say thanks to staff for their patience in bringing council up to speed on this process, and I think it's raised some other, or just raised awareness around what could be complicated challenges around the rental housing O D P and the letter of inquiry. I'm quite curious about that at this point, so happy to support this, and feel quite comfortable with Mr. Garrison's confidence that this isn't going to cause further harm around our affordable rental stock, so I'll be supportive, thank you.
Councillor Hardwick.
Yes, thank you. I was very concerned about the legal precedent-setting nature implied with, with this recommendation. However, having listened carefully, and in particular to Mr. Garrison's remarks about the longstanding checks and balances that are in place, I am encouraged, we have some trust to build, and the legal precedent aspect of it is something that should not be overlooked. But provided the respect for those checks and balances are retained, I can't see any reason not to support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Frye.
Thanks, I'll keep it quick. I just really appreciate staff's work on this and taking the time to explain it over and over and over again, apparently, but I really do appreciate the clarity, thanks to the team. And reflecting on this, I think it's important to recognize that this is about replacing rental housing and protecting rental housing. And I think that if this gives us its tool as we are building new rental housing, and if this helps to support the creation of new homes for folks in Vancouver to rent, then I'm, I'm supportive. So thanks for the work on this.
Thanks, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I will also keep it brief, but just express my thanks to staff for the detailed explanation. I think there's a couple of things that stood out for me. One is that these things are complex, and I think it's challenging, because there isn't sort of a layperson's description when these line on an agenda, and if you're a member of the public, it can be difficult to sort of fully interpret what's being proposed and the full implications here. So I think it's helpful when we get speakers and concerns are expressed to really walk through those. The other thing I just wanted to, to sort of speak to was acknowledging the one speaker that we had, Ms. Mychak, who's participated in the Vancouver Plan session with S F U this afternoon, and I really appreciated her expressing concern in terms of needing a range of options for housing in terms of affordable homeownership in the missing middle, and I do think that we have more work to do there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that from that speaker, but in this particular case, we're attempting to, through the O D P, rental O D P, to protect the existing rental stock and not displace. So I sort of acknowledge her, her comment there, and say that, you know, I think that there is more work to be done, but right now, I think what we have in front of us is important in terms of protecting these specific housing types. So I will support it for the reasons that were, that were identified, but I think it was a good discussion, and I appreciate the work the staff have done on this, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for speakers on the list, so clerks, if you can bring up the voting queue.
What a personal privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, councillor Carr, I'd like a vote assistant in favor, please.
Thanks so much. Clerks can record that, there we go. Okay, council, that has passed unanimously, if the clerks can bring that up on screen. Thank you so much to staff, and now we're moving on to the next item. Item seven, the last public hearing item of 2020, the rezoning on 349 E6 Avenue. And I'll just ask if anybody wants to declare conflict of interest, and just remind council to, if, if the recommendations are moved, to make sure you do so with the yellow memo that was distributed on December 1st. And the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by I B I Group Architects Incorporated to rezon 349 E6 Avenue from RM4 multiple dwelling to CD1 comprehensive development district to permit the development of a 12-story residential building with 82 social housing units, a height of 38.7 meter and a floor space ratio of 4.87 are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we refer to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list, and we see the public comments. Forty-three pieces of correspondence in support, 24 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much, clerks. Yes, so if anybody wants to talk to this item, 1-833-3538610 is the number, participant code 44615 hashtag, that's on Twitter and live stream, and we have Marcel Galleen from the rezoning centre to present. We do have a number of speakers, council, so I suggest we proceed with the slides, and then talk to the applicant team and staff. Go ahead, staff.
Good evening, mayor and council, just trying to share the presentation, I want to just make sure that you're able to see it.
It is on the public screen already, I know it's just coming up on the webex, so.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Marcel Galleen, rezoning planner for this application, submitted to staff for review in May 2020 under the short program. It has taken seven months to bring this item to public hearing. Please note, for council, for your approval is the inclusion of a yellow memo in relation to the building height provisions in the draft CD1 bylaw. I will return to this at the end of my presentation. The site is a single parcel on the northwest corner of E6 and Brunswick. The base zoning and surrounding context is RM4 permitting development up to 35 feet and an FSR of 1.45. The built form is largely two and three stories with some single detached houses. To the south is an eight-story social housing building for seniors constructed in the zone prior to zoning changes to the RM4 district schedule. The area to the west and north is zoned IC3 permitting a maximum height of 60 feet and a density of 3.0 FSR. One and a half blocks west, along Main Street, through the Mount Pleasant Community Plan implementation, buildings can achieve up to 13 stories or higher pending view cone The property is comprised of 23 strata lots and common property with a site area of approximately 12,000 square feet, frontage of 99 feet and depth of 122 feet. The site falls within the Broadway subway expansion project area. The existing property was purchased by the applicant, and as agreed upon, the previous strata owners were permitted to temporarily stay on-site. As of October 30th, 2020, all units are vacant. Previous strata owners are not covered by the city's tenant relocation and protection The lot to the west of the subject site at 325 E6 Ave is developed with a 36-unit social housing building constructed in 1968 and owned by, and owned by Brightside Community Homes Foundation. Brightside, the owner of the lot outlined in blue, B C Housing, and the applicant, owner of the lot outlined in red, have entered into an agreement entailing a mutual land purchase and replacement of the 36 units of social housing located on 325 E6 on 349 E6 pending approval of this rezoning. Upon completion of construction of the new building, Brightside will purchase the rezoning site, and the current tenants from their existing building will move into the new building. As part of the agreement, the applicant will then acquire 325 E6. The new social housing building at 349 will be completely owned and operated by Brightside. The city of Vancouver is not party to the agreement. Rezoning would allow Brightside to move their existing tenants into a new development without temporary relocation. Development potential of 325 E6 is limited to the existing RM4 zoning. Rezoning potential is limited to the requirements under the Mount Pleasant Community Plan and interim rezoning policy to deliver social housing. The site is within a five-minute walk of the Mount Pleasant Community Centre and Public Library, public transit, two future Skytrain stations, and a 15-minute walk of six parks, the seawall, and 12 childcare providers. Main Street, Broadway and Kingsway offer commercial services. The site is in the catchment of Mount Pleasant Elementary School and Vancouver Technical Secondary, which has somewhat limited capacity. Rezoning potential is guided by the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, which seeks to ensure more affordable housing is available for low-to-middle income households, including families, seniors, new immigrants and indigenous people. The plan supports the distribution of non-market housing to retain neighborhood diversity of population and services. The Broadway interim rezoning policy permits rezoning applications to be considered for projects involving social housing in the Broadway planning area. The rental housing stock O D P protects rental housing by requiring one-for-one replacement units on the site, same zoning district, or on sites that are in adjacent zoning districts as directed in the amendment approved by council. The O D P works alongside other renter protection measures, including the tenant relocation protection policy. With council's approval of the amendment, the replacement units to be delivered on 349 E6 complies with the rental housing stock O D P. The rental housing stock O D P applies to the Brightside site at 325 E6, which currently has the existing social housing units. The O D P does not reply, does not apply to 349 E6 as it is existing strata ownership housing with no rental. Replacement of the existing social housing units will occur prior to 325 E6 being redeveloped. This proposal is to rezone the site from RM4 to CD1 for a 12-story building with 82 units of social housing for seniors, families and those living with disabilities. As per the agreement between Brightside and the applicant, the proposed redevelopment provides replacement units for the 36 units at 325 E6 with 82 new social housing units on the rezoning site. The proposed unit mix includes 35 studio, 25 one-bed, 18 two-bed and four three-bed units. The unit mix is supported as Brightside provides homes mainly for seniors, and is expanding its portfolio to include more family units. A floor area of approximately 58,000 square feet, density of 4.87 FSR and a height of 127 feet are proposed, as is one level of underground parking with 19 vehicle and 106 bicycle spaces. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 287 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. The Mount Pleasant Community Plan supports the creation of social housing, although it does not prescribe a specific form of development. The proposal delivers a significant number of units and remains attentive to RM4 urban design objectives, site conditions and context. Support of the proposed form of development is based on the following. Housing of vulnerable population. The development delivers units to vulnerable populations secured for 60 years. No displacement of tenants. The proposed partnership agreement ensures no existing tenants will be displaced due to redevelopment. Open space. This slide compares the typical RM4 footprint on the left and the proposed development footprint on the right. Both floor plates are around 5,500 square feet. If the proposed development used an RM4 footprint, it would have a narrower interior sideyard. The proposed building footprint and massing are oriented north-south for more openness. Massing. The image on the left demonstrates that a similar building height would result if the proposed density were distributed over an RM4 footprint. However, the interior sideyard would be quite narrow. The proposal on the right has a slimmer frontage along E6, which provides more open. The proposal on the right has a slimmer frontage along East 6th, which provides more openness between buildings and wider views of the open sky. The slimmer frontage better lines with the RM4 guidelines for buildings to express a vertical composition. Shadowing. The shadow of the proposed development on the top contrasted to the RM4 footprint building with the same proposed density on the bottom demonstrates the RM4 footprint building would cast a similar shadow extent as the proposed development. While taller than surrounding developments, the slim tower will produce a narrow shadow that traverses the site and does not extend to any significant public spaces. Public realm interface. Setting the building further away from the interior property line allows for more usable open space, which is used for residence outdoor amenity area. This open space also adds visual interest to the public realm and overall pedestrian experience. Tree retention. A twelve-foot building setback in tree root protection area along East 6th ensures retention of six city trees. The more slender tower helps to enhance the public realm by maintaining the green and leafy streets. Previous strata owners who sold and rented back from the current owner have vacated the property, are not covered by the city's tenant relocation protection policy. Brightside has been in regular communication with social housing tenants throughout the project. At the time of application, twenty of the thirty-six units on-site were tenanted. A residential relocation proposal was submitted and it aligns with the city's TRPP. Tenants at 325 East 6th will move into the new development upon completion with Brightside managing the relocation. This project will meet the city's definition of social housing with a minimum of thirty percent of the units rented to households with incomes under the BC Housing income limits levels. Brightside will exceed the affordability requirements by securing a minimum forty-four percent of units below hills. The society has also been successful in securing the community housing fund from BC Housing to create deeper levels of affordability. Sixty people attended a pre-application open house. The city-led virtual open house was held from June 29th to July 19th, 2020. Seven hundred and sixty-eight unique visitors viewed the Shape Your City webpage, three hundred and seventy-two reviewed multiple documents, and ninety-four engaged individuals submitted comment forms and questions. One hundred and ninety-three submissions were received, including one hundred and thirty-seven comment forms, thirty-six questions, and twenty other pieces of input collected via email and telephone. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable housing, building heights, density and massing, building design, location, and amenity space. Key themes of concern included building height, density and massing, neighborhood context, precedence, parking and shadows, sunlight, and views. Building height, density, and massing. The Mount Pleasant Community Plan supports the creation of social housing. The proposed development is a departure from the base zoning. However, increased height and density is necessary to support the financial viability of social housing projects. Neighborhood context. The proposed height and density is greater than the low-mid-rise context. However, an existing eight-story building south of the site and anticipated mixed-use developments up to thirteen stories or more on Main Street provide a taller context. The street character will be maintained through tree retention and provision of an expansive outdoor amenity space. Precedence. There is no avenue for rezoning in this area unless it is for the provision of social housing. Future development needs to meet the requirements of the plan and Broadway interim rezoning policy. Parking. The reduced parking requirements help to support the delivery of social housing by lowering overall project costs. The project will comply with the Vancouver Parking Bylaw, and the applicant is proposing a TDM plan. The applicant is eligible for a sixty percent reduction to parking requirements through TDM measures and proximity to the future station at Great Northern Way. Shadow, sunlight, and views. The shadow cast from the development will traverse the site and not shadow any significant public spaces. The site is not located within a view cone that seeks to protect view quarters for the public. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application to rezone the site from RM4 to CD1 at 349 East 6th Avenue, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B, as it meets the intent of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan and respect to the delivery of social housing. If approved, the application would replace thirty-six social housing units from 325 East 6th Avenue and add an additional forty-six units for a total of eighty-two social housing units to help reach the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Lastly, a yellow memo has been drafted, which requires your action and approval in conjunction with the staff recommendations for this item. The memorandum recommends, in addition to the building height provisions in the draft CD1, which would allow discretion through the Director of Planning for roof elevator and mechanical pertinences or similar features. It is recommended that council move a motion to approve the yellow memo in conjunction with the staff recommendations for this item. Please note, the applicant team is present and would also like to make a brief presentation. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. I'm gonna ask the applicant team if you want to make a presentation, or if you'd just like to answer questions from council.
Yeah, I'd actually like to say a few words. I don't have a PowerPoint or anything.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Great, well, thank you very much. It's William Azarov, CEO of Brightside Community Homes, with you again, and good evening, Mayor and councillors. Just want to thank city staff and especially Marcel Geline for his excellent help over the last several months. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about another one of our very important affordable housing proposals here in Vancouver. You will remember, of course, that I was with you last week and back in July when council unanimously approved our previous proposed rezonings on East 12th Avenue and Venable Street. And while this goal of increasing affordable housing options with this proposal is the same, this project is unique, as Marcel described, because it enables Brightside to redevelop one of our older properties without temporarily relocating any residents, and that's something we're very, very excited and proud about. And that critical benefit is only possible because of the unique partnership we have, and the really excellent partnership we have with BC Housing and Wall Financial. So, this project, especially now, last week we got formal approval that we were awarded the BC Housing Community Housing Fund. So, when this was put together, we didn't know that at the time, so we can now say that this project will have twenty percent of units at deep subsidy or income assistance rates and fifty percent at rent geared to income rates prescribed by BC Housing's Community Housing Fund. And of course, you know that Brightside has a long track record since 1952 of delivering affordable housing and keeping our rents as low as possible. This level of affordability is only really possible with a proposed design, which increases the number of affordable housing units on the site from thirty-six to eighty-two on the site immediately adjacent to our Mount Pleasant Lines Manor. The proposed height and density make this project not only financially feasible, but also allows to incorporate really ample and very good indoor and outdoor amenity space. So, on top of minimizing the resources required from us as a not-for-profit housing provider, this unique opportunity allows Brightside to continue to provide a diversity of housing options in Mount Pleasant for decades to come. So, thank you very much for your time and attention to this important project, and my team and I are more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much. We do have questions. Counselor, just a reminder, this is your only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, but you can ask questions of staff at the moment, too. So, Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I have two questions. What's the role of the Wall Financial Corporation in this? And are we making any sort of commitments around what happens at 325 if we approve 349?
To staff or the applicant?
The applicant, maybe.
Okay.
Well, the first one to the applicant and the second one to the staff.
Okay. Thanks so much. The applicant, did you catch that first one?
I did, I can start, and if Bruno Wall wants to jump in, he can, for sure. So, you know, Wall Financial has provided development management services to Brightside to help us build the new building, and we have this agreement through BC Housing to purchase each other's properties, which is a benefit to us. And mostly, you know, what this does is allows us to build next door and move the residents once only into their brand-new units when it's done. So, that's sort of the extent of the relationship, of the partnership with Wall Financial.
So, they'll own 325 when this is done? And you'll own 349?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. We'll own each other's current properties.
Okay, thanks. And then to staff, are we making any commitments around the 325 site if we approved the 349? What's likely to happen there? What's likely to happen at 325?
Hi there, thanks for the question. It's Marcel Geline, rezoning planner. In terms of the adjacent site at 325 East 6th, there basically, there would be no rezoning potential right now unless it would be for the provision of social housing. It's basically limited to what is dictated by the RM4 district schedule at this time.
So, maybe I could ask a question to Mr. Wall. Why would you be interested in acquiring 325?
Mr. Wall, are you available? The applicant team, do we have Mr. Wall available for...
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm seeing Mr. Wall is muted. Mr. Wall, if you could unmute yourself. Sorry, Mayor Stewart, we're unable to unmute Mr. Wall.
Okay, thanks. Is another member of the applicant team able to speak here?
It's William Azarov. Again, I mean, I can't really speak on behalf of Bruno Wall and Wall Financial. I know the agreement we have and what will get built for Brightside, but I just, I can't speak to Bruno's intentions or what his plans are.
Okay, thanks so much. I think, Counselor Swanson, I've stopped your clock, but it doesn't look like Mr. Wall's available to speak, so perhaps, I'm not quite sure what I can do for you?
Just let's not waste any more time, that's okay.
Okay, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for the applicant as well, and it's just, the first one, is just to get a sense of who's going to be living in the building. I know you mentioned seniors and families with disabilities, but can you fill in a little bit more detail on me to understand who's going to benefit from this building?
Yeah, it's William here. Thanks, Counselor Kirby Young. So, the unit mix will be seventy-three percent seniors and twenty-seven percent families. So, the mix of unit types will be thirty-five studios, twenty-five one-bedrooms, eighteen two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. So, right now, the building is entirely seniors, and we want a mix. And basically, what we've got is the replacement units will be all seniors as they are today, and the remainder, the net new units, will be fifty percent seniors and fifty percent families.
Okay, and did I hear correctly, families with disabilities?
No, so our mandate is to serve seniors, families, and people with disabilities. So, it's not necessarily families with disabilities.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I heard that earlier in the presentation. Okay, so related to that, you have eighty-two total units, nineteen parking, and staff commented that with a sixty percent reduction due to the TDM traffic management measures and being near the Great Northern Way Station. I'm wondering, but you have one hundred and six bicycle spaces. I'm just wondering, given the demographic of seniors in the building, if you can comment on that, because normally we see more of a need for parking, because people may not be as mobile in later years. Are these very fit people, or not typically owning a car or vehicle due to finances? Or it just struck me as an imbalance there.
Thanks for the question, Counselor Kirby Young. It's Graham Plant with CPA Development Consultants, who's working with Brightside on this project. The parking ratio is reflective of Brightside's overall portfolio, so from a parking perspective, they're very comfortable. I believe that the bike stalls are primarily more to meet the city's backlog than they are necessarily to meet the demands of future residents of the building. However, I would note that, given the introduction of family units into Brightside's portfolio, there is a likelihood that there would be, you know, some additional need for bike stalls.
Just for time, maybe I could just reframe the question a little bit, laser in a little bit more. If it's seventy-five percent or seventy-three percent seniors, but only nineteen parking stalls, is that sufficient, given any potential mobility challenges of that demographic?
Thanks for the question, Counselor. So, based on Brightside's existing portfolio, which is predominantly seniors, the answer is yes. I mean, they see a twenty percent or so parking stall to, like a unit count ratio to parking stalls in their portfolio. So, given the proximity to transit and the proximity to amenities, this site is more central than most of their other, well, not most, but many of their other buildings. And so, I think the answer is yes, it's adequate.
Okay, so it hasn't been, that ratio hasn't been a challenge? I know Brightside has a lot of experience in supporting these groups and populations, but it hasn't been a challenge before?
No, to give me, no, I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor. To give you an example, a sixty-four unit building at Brightside is redeveloping that is all seniors. They have fourteen parking stalls that are currently being used. They have twenty available, but only fourteen that are being used.
Okay, that's really helpful, because I just wanted to consider the context of who was going to be living here and make sure they were supported, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Hi there, this is Clement from IBI, from the design team. I just also want to add that we do also have one passenger loading spot within the parking. So, again, that's also to provide accessibility and also loading and drop-off of passengers within, or at P1.
Great, and with my last little bit of time, is Mr. Wall unmuted yet? Because I wouldn't mind having receiving answer to Counselor Swanson's question.
Yes, I think I am.
Did you hear the question, Mr. Wall, from Counselor Swanson?
Yes, it is.
We just have thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. I'll be quick. The arrangement we have with Brightside is such that the value that we're paying for the existing site reflects the current development potential that's there now, and so that's the existing arrangement. So, there's no assumptions on any redevelopment beyond that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and that's the five minutes. Over to Counselor Weep. Might be muted, Counselor Weep?
Yeah, I guess my first question would be on the form of development. I mean, it's been talked about twelve-story tower and the benefit housing, but recognizing other buildings in the area like Social District that are about nine stories and a bit wider, take out more of the Forbes. I'm wondering kind of why those two, or the twelve-story was chosen over kind of a nine, ten-story, kind of more mixed, brick at the first four levels and then kind of setback.
And you're breaking up a little bit, Counselor Weep, but I made out most of that. Is that to the applicant or the staff?
It's to the applicant, understanding the form of development and why they went with the straight twelve-story tiny tower.
Okay, thanks, over to the applicant.
Hello. Martin Brookner with IBI Group Architects.
Hi, please go ahead.
We did quite a bit of work on looking at different massings for the site, and I think Marcel Geline has explained to council how the twelve-story came about, and we did that work ourselves and also with planning. We actually came in with a lower building and were encouraged to make it a little higher, make it narrow, it would be a better fit in the neighborhood. I think for all the reasons that Marcel explained to council, there are benefits to having this additional height above nine, and clearly, a simple, clean form, I think, works. We wouldn't want to step the building necessarily, so I hope that answers your question.
I guess a follow-up to staff, recognizing that a lot of the neighborhood really likes the step form at Social District and how they have a good street feel to them. So, I'm wondering, what was the level that the performance brought to staff, and why was that determined not to be the right?
Thank you, Counselor. This is Paul Tang, Senior Development Planner. During the LOE process, the applicant did bring in... the applicant did bring in a nine-story version of this particular project with the same amount of density. It was a squatter building, but it was a much broader building, and it occupied much more of the site in its footprint. Furthermore, it would actually impinge itself on its neighboring properties more so because of that extra width and fatness to the side, to the building. So staff actually encouraged the applicant to go forward with a taller building, a slender 5,500-foot floor plate type of building, to contain the same amount of density. Yes, those step forms that we're seeing on Main Street are nice, but they usually occupy a much bigger site in order to get that kind of form. The site isn't very large, and as a result, we wouldn't be able to get that kind of step form in any kind of elegant, meaningful way. And a reminder also, the ground plane is freed up a lot more with this more slender floor plate, enabling the applicant to retain some of the trees that are on-site or just adjacent to the site. And also getting that very nice ground plane amenity space that interacts directly with the, the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Thank you. That's it for council questions. So I'm going to move on to speakers. Just a reminder, you, Counselor, you can ask more questions after we hear from speakers. So just going to go over to staff and clerks. I'm just looking here. We have, oh, Mark White is up again on this item. Mr. White, if, if you're there, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you again. I should also mention, I am a resident, I'm a resident of Falls Creek South. I'd like to thank you again, Mayor and Counselors, on behalf of the Seniors Advisory Committee. I'm speaking in favor of the proposal and, and the recommendation of city staff. As you're aware, the Mount Pleasant Manor House redevelopment partnership will actually increase social housing units, replacing the existing 36 units, where 100% of the residents currently are seniors. I think that the, the thing that we're most thrilled about again is their affordability, and, and they, they've defined it more clearly as 20% deep subsidy, 50% rent geared to income, and 30% affordable market rent as per BC Housing. And that all, all units have universal design, and 5% of the units are fully accessible. The other component that we think is really important is the amenity spaces are all barrier-free, including an urban agricultural rooftop, which is fully accessible as well. We believe this type of development should encourage city councillors and city staff to meet with nonprofit housing providers, co-op housing leadership, in collaboration with provincial and federal funders, to explore new accessibility and affordability thresholds, and to create more innovative funding programs that are more relevant to 48% of the population living in the city of Vancouver. In conclusion, on behalf of SAC, I'm speaking in favor of the proposal. And we think it's an excellent case study that demonstrates what is possible through innovative partnerships and strong social values. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for sticking around and, and offering those comments. Really appreciate it. We don't have any questions from council for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker, who is Alyssa Myschak.
Hello again, Mayor Kennedy and Council. Hello.
I have the five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello again, Mayor Kennedy and Councilors. I believe I have a presentation that is to be loaded. I'm not certain if that is up on site.
It is. And so, yep, and we're on the first slide, which shows a roundabout.
Okay, so I'm not going, I'm, I actually am not going to speak to the, the WebEx presentation. I'm just going to speak to what I have on screen, so I don't know if it's going to completely jack, but we'll try it.
Yeah, me too.
So for the past 20 years, I have worked in Gastown, and for the last 14 years, I have regularly taken transit down Main and Hastings. I've been fortunate to work with Jim Green early in my career in the 90s, and more recently with the staff at the Homeless Outreach Centre. Yes, yes, absolutely, we need more affordable housing and social housing in Vancouver. I have firsthand experience. As previously mentioned, I'm also a participant in the Mount Pleasant Plan, and it's the plan, in fact, I am going to speak to tonight. When an architect and design team, sorry, there's a little bit of-
Sorry, sorry, Speaker. We're getting some feedback or something from your, from your phone?
When an architect and design team is given a large project, they typically receive a program. They must consider the program holistically, and they cannot cherry pick. For a complete and best, strong neighborhood, should not the Mount Pleasant, Pleasant Community Plan, in fact, any plan, be considered as a holistic document in a, in a, in a rezoning. And I think this application has cherished item 4.1, housing, to provide housing and more affordable housing for low-income, middle house, especially for families. So I'd like to present to you a broader context of what is contained in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan. And I'm just going to, oh, sorry. I'm just going to quickly read a few things from the plan, which I'd like you to consider as you listen to other speakers tonight. The plan says, provide high-quality, attractive, more energy-efficient and affordable housing, which respects neighborhood character and lowers carbon footprint. It says, recognize historical importance of the hilltown. Seek to distinguish new development in Mount Pleasant from predominant forms of development in other parts of the city in ways that respond to the unique social, economic, and physical qualities of the neighborhood. Honor the local preference for a low-high massing rhythm across the hilltown, but with modest height as the norm, mostly low-to-mid-rise buildings. With new development, keep the neighborhood context always in mind. Apply a broader definition of heritage for Mount Pleasant that goes beyond buildings and includes streetscapes. And finally, it is important to note that additional height, as opposed to density, is a very sensitive issue, where there was the least convergence of community opinion during the community plan process. Future development will need to demonstrate how to reach an optimal balance. The slides that I've put together here are, in fact, the context that we see from the community, and that I see from my height, and not from a bird's eye view, and not from a computer that's able to fly around. So this is the site that is going to be redeveloped. We are looking towards the mountains, believe it or not. In the next slide, number two, again, there is our site on the left-hand side and the mountains in the background. Number three, next, this is looking down towards the west, and our site is actually on the right-hand side. So we can see the predominant low-massing and nothing sticking up with some trees. This is moving back further east and looking west. So our site, our tower would be sticking up somewhere beyond that tree, just to give you again context in the neighborhood. This is looking south, up the street, up Brunswick, and our site would be on the right-hand side, just past those trees, on top of the hill. Number six, this is looking from Fifth Avenue and up over a low-rise building. On the right-hand side is a newer condo, which is six stories on Sixth Avenue. Number seven, we are now looking down Sixth Avenue towards the east. On the right-hand side, you can see the eight-story building, which is existing and old. On the left, we see a new development, six stories, and our tower would be beyond that. This is looking on the right-hand side is the current seniors housing, and this is looking east, again, at that tower, which is existing in eight stories. Our next image is what's next to those, that tower, and here is where our issue of context begins. These are two heritage houses right across from where the house, this, this 12-story tower is proposed. And the next slide, again, just barely half a block away, another lovely little heritage house tucked in the woods. Context, next to that kitty corner to the site, two more houses, heritage houses, low-rise. And right across from the site on six is again another low-rise building. Further down, we see more houses in a row, again, all heritage houses, context small. So we're now looking at individual houses. I would just have the clerk flip through these individual houses. And finally, we've come to an image which shows the redevelopment of one of the heritage houses with increased density, where there will be several smaller units added, and this lifted up. And one more is how we are incorporating density in low-rise further down the street. And one last one of more houses, my apologies. The neighboring streets are low-rise, as said, we're on slide 20 now. Just back on Fifth, we see some walk-ups, and on Seventh, we see more walk-ups. Oh.
I am, I'm going to have to stop you there, because we're, we're quite a ways over the five-minute limit, so.
Oh, my apologies. Could, could I just-
No problem at all. No, I know, we just wanted to make sure we got your slides.
No, I just, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I didn't prepare for this as much as the first one. I just wanted to say that I really respect the work that Brightside is doing. I did listen to the application for 2924 Venables, and-
Yeah, I'm afraid we're going to have to wrap it up.
I would respectfully request that, that council, given item number six and the minor amendment and the concerns that were, that were expressed, I would, I would respectfully request council send this land swap rezoning proposal back to staff and have them come up with a dual form of what is going to be proposed in the next, on the adjacent suite.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, there are no questions, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. And we've got Matthew Drown.
Can he pronounce it right? Excellent, well done.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Kennedy and Council. Thanks very much for an opportunity to speak. So I, I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I've lived in the community now for 13 years. I'm the president of the Strata, actually a three-story walk-up just around the corner from the development. And while I support the addition of social housing, I, I feel I cannot support this development, and, and really, there's three main reasons for that. One is the previous speaker so eloquently put it, the development is, is just in not in keeping with the character and doesn't follow the Mount Pleasant Community Plan. As a president of the Strata, I feel that I'm concerned by the removal of a three-story affordable walk-up building, and the impact as well on, on the streetscape and local parking. And I'm concerned about the, the land swap, and I feel, I feel like we're not being fully transparent with, with what's happening on both properties. Although I'm assured by staff that the adjacent property 325 can now not be redeveloped, I'm skeptical. And I am concerned that what we're going to, what's going to happen here is we're going to lose an affordable three-story walk-up, and we're going to gain one tower with some social housing in it, and another tower that'll be just purely market rental. So to my first point, or to my second point, I guess, my wife and I bought a, bought a suite in this building back in 2007, mainly because this area is affordable. And the reason it's affordable is because of all these three-story walk-up buildings, low-rise buildings that make up most of Mount Pleasant, while being very close to downtown. I can still walk to the office. For comparison on, on affordability, an existing building such as ours, you can buy for between $700 or $800 a square foot. Anything new is 1,000 or more square foot. So really, the makeup of our building reflects that. We've got young families. We've got low-income seniors. We've got seniors who bought back in this building way back in 1976 and are aging out in the neighborhood. And really, that's the kind of, that's the kind of family and, and group that, that buys these buildings. Well, at first glance, this, this development appears to, to add quite a bit of, of social housing to the, to the neighborhood. If I look into it a bit deeper, it, it actually doesn't. So we're taking 36 units from the property next door. We've eliminated 23 affordable units that are now gone of affordable housing. But only, I think, 57 units in the building will be non-market social housing. So we've actually lost one unit net of affordable housing in the neighborhood. And the unit next, the building next door, which will be owned by Wall Financial, I expect, given that the, the Urban Review Panels, Urban Development Panels, minutes from July, state that staff has already looked at this building site as potential for development for a tower. I can only imagine that a tower is going to be going next door. So I'm just really concerned, as someone who has relied on this low, low-rise building, that with these new land swaps, developers are going to start, plus you with that item number six on the agenda, which was that, that change to the zoning, that we're going to see now affordable three-level walk-ups slowly being bought up and replaced by towers of, of rentals. And while I've heard a lot of concern from council tonight about retaining social housing and retaining affordable rentals, I've heard nothing about retaining affordable, affordable housing that people already own. And that's a substantial part of our neighborhood. I, I don't quite understand why a development that's not in keeping with the Mount Pleasant Community Plan can even be considered. And I don't understand why, up until item six, before this was passed, how a development could be considered that actually contravenes the bylaws. And I just, I'm concerned that, that the process doesn't, to me, seem fully transparent, and certainly doesn't seem to follow the plan that the community agreed to with the Mount Pleasant Community Plan.
Thanks so much. That is, that's the five minutes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I timed it perfectly.
Thanks. Okay, good stuff. Thank you. There are no questions from council, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Thank you so much for participating tonight. We have Luke Harrison from Catalyst Community Developments, number three.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. Speaker number three did indicate they were withdrawing.
Okay, thanks very much. We'll move to speaker four, Amira Orick.
I under, the clerk here again. Mayor Stewart, I understand speaker four is not on the line.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to Jill Atkey, speaking number five.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. It's Jill Atkey here on behalf of BC Nonprofit Housing Association. I'm here to speak in favor, oh, can you hear me?
Yes, again, I was just saying hello.
Oh, hello, Mayor. How are you?
Good, thanks. Go ahead.
I support the proposed redevelopment at 349 East Sixth Avenue. Some of these statistics will be familiar to you. So there's 150,000 renters in Vancouver. 66,000 of those are spending more than they can afford on their current rent. 35,000 of those are spending more than half of their income pre-tax on rent. So the 46 net new units proposed here tonight are not going to solve the rental affordability emergency that many in our city are experiencing, and that's just the reality. No project will on its own. But the project would benefit 46 more individuals and families than the status quo. In a new building with improved accessibility, that will also be a benefit to the seniors in the current building. So last week, you heard my colleague, Tom Armstrong, speak about the importance of redevelopment of existing community housing in order to meet our affordable housing objectives as a city and, and as a community housing sector. Redevelopments are not easy undertakings for housing providers, but that certainly pales, that difficulty pales in comparison to the stress and disruption for existing residents in a redevelopment, redeveloping building. in a redevelopment, redeveloping building, who are typically and suddenly worried about their housing security and their futures. This project avoids all of that component of the redevelopment, and that can't be, the significance of that can't be understated. So people can stay in their homes until their new affordable homes are ready for them to move into. And I'd say, in any redevelopment scenario, that's a real gem and shows the creativity and commitment, I think, on the part of Brightside and its partners, to make this a good process for residents. I just want to speak to the density for a moment and the height of the building. And I know that it's the sort of change that many neighborhoods are grappling with, both in our city and throughout the country. And I would include my own neighborhood in Vancouver in that as well. We know through the City of Vancouver's own analysis that we are losing low-income families and individuals from the city, and that's not, as we know, because incomes are going up, but because they've been pushed out of the city. And I think that's a real loss for our communities. I've presented to council before, just a couple of months ago, on the importance of mixed-income communities, and that the outcomes for all of us are improved because everyone has access to greater services that are typically attached over time to mixed-income communities. So I'd ask you to keep that top of mind as you cast your votes this evening for the Brightside project. And want to just speak as well to some of the comments that we've heard about the new development, and we hear this typically with new developments, is that it's not affordable enough. And I absolutely agree with that. But this is the situation that we're in. I think the reality is that none of the existing residents are going to see their rents increase. That's really, really important, and that speaks to the power and the mission drive of the community housing sector and our members like Brightside. And it's important to remember that new developments are not typically as affordable as we want them to be on day one, but they remain affordable in perpetuity, and often we see those rents come down over time. And so I think that's important to remember, that the rents on day one are not the rents twenty years down the road.
Thank you so much.
And that's the conclusion.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Thanks so much for participating tonight. I don't see any questions from council for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker, but thanks again so much for participating tonight. As always, counsel, the next speaker is Sixth, Cameron Robinson.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I understand that speaker number six is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps speaker number seven, Tiffany DeZeta.
Also, Mayor Stewart, I understand speaker number seven is not on the line.
Okay, we'll go try number eight, Scott Delengboom.
And same answer from me, Mayor Stewart.
Okay. How about speaker number nine?
Yes.
Okay, Rob Grimbridge. Thanks.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I am Rob Grimbridge. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I live in this neighborhood, Heather's proposal. I've been here for more than fifteen years, and I've seen incredible change in this neighborhood over these years, and as well beforehand, while living in other neighborhoods in the city. I am not speaking on behalf of any organization, but I am thinking of others in this community, in particular those in the most recent few years who are gone against their wishes, those who were unable to remain in the neighborhood, those who are presently being pushed out, and those who will be forced out in the days to come, unfortunately. Difficult to fathom their experiences and their pain. The community suffers their losses as well, and the diversity, which was once amazing here, is now so obviously evaporating. I'm thinking also of the people that were involved in the creation of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, and the thought and effort and time they put into making the plan to ensure livable neighborhoods, and identify ideas and solutions for social and supportive housing. I find it interesting that much of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan was created while these people gathered very close to the site, about a block away, and they took walks in the neighborhood and identified problems with the neighborhood and things that shouldn't, how it should and should not be in the future, and how they anticipated, you know, the arrival of the Skytrain, and risk to the neighborhood, and affordable housing, and protection against speculation, increasing land value, gentrification, et cetera. So the building on this site at Three Forty-Nine East Sixth, with its twenty-three homes, is currently boarded up by the applicant, as shown in the documents provided. The applicant intends to demolish this building, and then they intend to demolish the building next door with its thirty-six units of social housing. And this would obviously just be the beginning. The applicant's proposal will also have a terrible effect on the fragile situation for affordable housing in the area for the many people that are just hanging on. As a result, the losses, pain in the neighborhood will continue, increase, and accelerate. This result goes against the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, which strives for preserving, replacing, and expanding Mount Pleasant's stock of rental housing. The Mount Pleasant Community Plan mentions the valued asset of a large inventory of affordable housing, including rental and social housing, a statement that was true when the plan was created and is now jeopardized. In the documents provided, along with the proposed rules eleven looked at, there are many references to the Mount Pleasant Community Plan and the details in the plan. Unfortunately, the plan's content is often used selectively, and it's taken out of context. The document at times seems to somehow pretend this site is somewhere else, that it's a, or it is a different site, and it's somewhere else. It's as if it's a large site and/or if it's in one of the sub-areas in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, like Main and Clark, Broadway between Main and Clark, sorry, and/or on Main between Second and Seventh, and of course, it's neither of those. And I think it's deceptive to try to show that it is, but, you know, there are many obvious major problems with the proposal, where it violates the intent and the content of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, where the Mount Pleasant Community Plan calls for designs respecting the look and feel of the area. This is completely ignored by this proposal. And when it talks about ensuring buildings that have supportive housing respond to the character of the neighborhood in terms of form and scale, it's also a hard fail. The Mount Pleasant Community Plan also discourages cookie-cutter design, and it fails again there.
Just fifteen seconds.
And when it comes to maintaining the hilltown identity and profile of Mount Pleasant, again, it so obviously violates the Mount Pleasant Community Plan.
Thank you so much. You have questions from Councilman Weeb. Councilman Weeb, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks so much for bringing this perspective. Obviously, I was someone that sat in those rooms a block away and did the walks in the community and was part of building this implementation plan. So I know the plan and the intent and what we're trying to do. The goal here is, I'm trying to figure out, is we're struggling with some of the seniors in the area, because I do still live in the area, with broken-down elevators and things starting to get to a point where the safety of accessibility is being limited, and here we have a building that's gonna provide that. So how do we justify the need for accessible spaces and affordable spaces for the long term, recognizing that the stock is getting old and some of those buildings aren't able to meet the needs of people with disabilities?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you were there too for that plan, and I hear you, and I think we saw people in the Native Education Center as well that were, you know, clients and residents of those buildings and participating in the creation of the plan. And I'm not saying I have all the answers, but I do see lots of, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do see lots of things going, moving forward and new spaces being created. And, you know, absolutely, we need to, that needs to happen, right? And even in my own building, our elevator is being replaced right now, and it's a pain. I'm not a senior, but I understand, but I don't think it justifies, you know, going against so much of what is in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan and so much of what the effort was put in there just to kind of rule that out. I mean, the building is way too... It's way, it's way too tall, right? I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous, but, I mean, we see lots of development happening, we see lots of building happening. To me, it seems like, and I'm sure you know way more than I do, so I apologize, but I think there's lots happening in the city to create new homes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and thanks so much for coming to speak and bringing that perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions for you, sir, so that, I'll thank you for your participation. We're gonna move on to the next speaker. Okay, council, we've got, sorry, I'm just looking at my list here. Right, we have Michelle Tashnik. Speaker number ten, Michelle Tashnik.
It's the city clerk here. Mayor Stewart, I understand speaker ten is not on the line.
Okay, thanks. Let's try eleven, Francois Robertson.
And again, the clerk here. Mayor Stewart, I believe speaker eleven is also not on the line.
Okay, how about speaker twelve, Stephen Boas.
Speaker twelve has withdrawn.
Thanks. We have speaker thirteen, Kristy Fedrina.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks very much. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Kristy Fedrina. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm opposed to this development. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been a resident and homeowner in Mount Pleasant on Sixth Avenue East, a block from the proposed building site, for over twelve years. I've enjoyed this unique community. Other people have mentioned, but it is, does have a significant indigenous heritage. It's a diverse demographics here of musicians, artists, and the new young families, as well as retirees and veterans. It does offer us that an eclectic selection of such, you know, cafes, there's cottage breweries, restaurants, it's quite a trendy and expanding area. But despite the recent development over the past ten years, which I've witnessed, it's maintained its uniqueness, its character, with the preservation of just the ambience of the whole Mount Pleasant. It's maintained, like it's preserved historic buildings, such as the Vancouver Brewery Building on Sixth and Scotia. And I believe that this twelve-story, and significantly, I'm saying twelve-story building will negatively impact this historic neighborhood. The majority, as someone had previously mentioned and showed excellent slides of the neighborhood, really three to four stories from buildings, residential buildings, that were built in the sixties and seventies, and the more recent developments, six stories is the general height of these new development condominiums. But I believe the twelve-story structure, despite it being a social housing, which I don't have an issue with, is incongruent with the existing neighborhood structures, based on its proposed height and appearance. The building, I mean, I believe the building architecture, street design, green space, I know some have been considered, but I think it will affect the aesthetics of the area significantly. And I don't, just don't find it acceptable, after living here for so long and really loving this area. I understand the reasons for new development. You need to increase density, increase livability, increase affordability. I've heard previous speakers, particularly because we're in such close proximity to main transit, I support that. I completely support that. But I don't support a twelve-story structure in this iconic area. So I would ask you, please take into consideration the existing unique character and the existing demographics and the historical significance in this area, and before permitting such a conspicuous and incompatible structure in this historic Vancouver neighborhood. I also really enjoy the birds in the area and notice that in front of the proposed building site on Sixth and New Brunswick, there is mature deciduous trees there that support important habitat for local birds, and I don't know if they've said they were gonna preserve those exact trees or not, but that's what I would like to say. So I appreciate the time and the opportunity to express my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, so I am gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you for participating tonight. The next speaker I have on the list is fourteen, speaker number fourteen, Janice Reed.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. I, you know what, the previous speakers have been so eloquently expressed my feelings about this. I'm not sure what more I can add, but I did want to emphasize that this is, and tonight I've learned that the only way to get CD1 rezoning is social housing. So I guess that's the motive, motivation for this applicant purchasing that building in the first place. They've actually, in fact, it seems somewhat audacious to have gone ahead and bought everybody out, displacing probably twenty-three rental units, affordable, and then gone ahead and boarded it up and prepared it, prepared it to demolish, for demolition without having approval. So I feel like this is being a railroad situation, where it's just about the social housing and not about the other aspects of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan, which the points I were, some of the points I was gonna make, that's probably the biggest one, is it setting precedent? You allow this one to go up, and then pretty soon, it'll be purchasing these low-rise buildings to turn them into social housing towers. I don't really like the look of social housing towers. I don't think we should be keeping people in towers like that, like people who can't afford quality living. I would point out that the residents at Three Twenty-Five Sixth are, have bigger homes and more open space where they are. I'm not sure how many of them are in favor of being relocated. It hasn't been communicated. The community plan, as it's been said, was quite, there was quite, quite a lot went into developing that plan, and I feel like it's being disregarded. I relied on that plan when I purchased on that street, and I thought the plan was brilliant because it looked to me like the intention was to maintain the community feel. I never thought it would, it would, it would turn to this. I thought, I thought maybe buildings would be renovated. I understand that old buildings need to be kept up. I thought density housing in terms of houses being renovated to accommodate units, but I never thought of this. So I feel like the integrity of the plan and the integrity of the city has been compromised here by bringing this project forward. Also, the community plan, the overarching principle of it is to honor the local preference for mostly low-to-mid-rise buildings, with high rises only on large sites. And this is what I've seen, up to now, this is what I've seen happening in Mount Pleasant, that development has been sort of consistent with the plan, although the, probably the housing, the building heights have increased a little bit. little bit. So, so, um, on Sixth, uh, six stories is acceptable, um, including on Broadway East and Main, but I, I, I don't, I haven't seen any properties on Main that are higher than six stories. But anyways, um, people are all right with six stories. They accept that. And, and, and I would note that I sat through the whole, uh, meeting last week and, and, um, all of those projects were six stories, including the ones on Venables. And, um, that project received 75% approval from the, from the feedback and, uh, 10% opposed, um, and there were no concerns about height. Uh, where, so, so you have to take that into consideration, like you're really disrupting the neighborhood by, by even considering this project. Uh, 51% have been opposed. That's what the applicant, um, communicated, was that 51% are, are opposed in their feedback and 36% approve. So, um, nobody, nobody is against social housing. It just needs to be in conformance with the character of the neighborhood, and that's what they did on Venables. So why can't you do that in Mount Pleasant as well? Um, I now see that this flip, I now see the purpose for this, this, this land flip. So, so now we are going to see new building in that site between the two buildings. Uh, we have 12 stories on one end of the block, six on the other, so what's gonna happen in the middle? And they did not purchase this to lose money. Uh, so I, I'm still not assured that, that you're, you're looking out for the Mount Community, uh, Mount Pleasant Community, um, residents in, 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 uh, considering this proposal. Thank you, thank you for, um, hearing me.
No problem at all. Thank you for calling in. Appreciate it. There are no questions for you, so I'm gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, council, we have Speaker number 15, Dana, Dana Sharon.
Hi there. Hi. Um, yeah, uh, my name, hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Um, hi there. My name is Dana, um, and I am a resident of the Mount Pleasant, um, community, and I am in support of this project. Um, I wanna quickly thank you, Mayor Stewart and City Council for, um, hearing me today as well as other speakers that have spoken today. I think it's a very important part of the process, uh, consulting with the community and hearing what the concerns of the community are. So I really, really thank you for, um, hearing me today. Um, so the main reason I am in support of this project is because I myself am a young professional living in Vancouver, specifically in Mount Pleasant. Um, affordability is a major issue for me. I pay over 30% of my salary on my rent. Um, and so that is a key concern for me. I want to be able to continue to live in this neighborhood, um, and knowing that there are projects like these that will allow for me to, uh, continue to live in this neighborhood is, um, somewhat heart, heartwarming and, um, it makes me hopeful for the future of Vancouver. Um, we all know that housing is a major, major issue in Vancouver and affordability, uh, is critical, uh, as well. And so I think projects like these are incredibly important. Um, as you know, Mount Pleasant is an accessible and amenity-rich neighborhood and it has a very vibrant community. Um, and this community is made up of folks ranging in socioeconomic background, and I think that that is something that is so vital to the community is that we make sure that we, we keep that diverse, um, community alive. Um, and I think that, that can be somewhat, um, challenging in, in increasingly gentrified city. Um, there are many neighborhoods that are, are becoming more and more gentrified, and I think that Mount Pleasant is one of these. Um, however, I think, uh, that it is important to take into account the kinds of projects that we are including in, um, our neighborhoods. And so I think it's important that we prioritize the folks that need affordable and accessible housing, um, and not just building to create units and profits. We have to create housing for the people. Um, and I know that height has been discussed here, um, a few times by previous speakers, and I think that, um, I think the discussion of height actually allows for more affordability, um, because it increases the affordable housing, housing stock in Vancouver. And for, for me as a young professional, that's something that I would like to see more of, especially in, in my neighborhood and, um, increasingly popular neighborhoods that are being, uh, gentrified for profit. So I appreciate the applicant's, uh, submission and, uh, thank you very much for hearing me today. Thanks.
Thank you so much for calling in, and I don't see any questions, uh, for you. So, council, that's the end of our speakers list, and I'm going to now, I'll call for a first time for speakers, uh, if you wanna speak to this item. It's 1-833-353-8610. Participation code 44615 hashtag to get on the list, and the phone number will be tweeted out and available on the live stream. Uh, and I'm gonna ask the clerks, do we have anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, yes. Um, I'm aware of three additional speakers on the line.
Okay, great. Maybe the, um, the first speaker would, uh, come forward and say your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes.
Mayor Stewart, I believe the first speaker is Ian Fisher.
Great, okay, Mr. Fisher.
Great, uh, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. Uh, I live two blocks west of the site and face east towards it. I have no issues with the use of the proposed building, but its height is so far beyond what the current zoning allows or what the Mount Pleasant Community Plan intends, based on my reading of it, that I must speak in opposition. This proposal is almost four times the height allowed under the current zoning and twice the height allowed under the IC3 zone that applies just to the west, the west end of this block. This would be the tallest building in Mount Pleasant, north of Broadway, south of Second Avenue, Great Northern Way, between Canby and Fraser. And this is despite it being well off arterial streets and on the path of Brewery Creek. Based on the Mount Pleasant Community Plan and its direction to respond to the topography and focus taller buildings on arterials and in the Hilltown area around the Broadway, Main, Kingsway focal point, this site is not suited to a building of this height. Uh, of most concern is that the proposal, if approved, would set a precedent for future developments in the area. I know that's been rejected in earlier discussions here, but this application is using the eight-story building across the street as a precedent for this 12-story building, uh, so I can only see that that would continue. So approving a 12-story building will generate requests for the same or greater height in the immediate area, despite this not being consistent at all with the policies related to built form in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan. In the near term, this will be a precedent used by Wall Financial for the existing Lions Manor site. Clearly, they have made some assumptions about the development potential of that site and thus the value of this property, and no doubt have discussed this with staff. Their buyouts of the owners of 349 E6 were reportedly very generous, so I'm sure they have an investment that they would like to recoup. Uh, rezoning 349 E6 Avenue without also considering the 325 E6 Avenue site that Wall expects to receive is rather disingenuous. I would also note that the two items of correspondence labeled as other are actually opposed. They both make clear that this proposal is too tall, and that was the main point that they expressed. Uh, just to conclude, this rezoning should not be approved as presented. The applicant should be asked to come back with a full proposal for both of the sites, 325 and 349 E6 Avenue, one that is more neighborly and better response to the built form envisioned in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your, uh, calling in today. Just checking, and I don't see any questions from council, so I'll, uh, ask the next speaker to come forward. Clerks, do we have the next speaker?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, the next speaker is Pascal Chapuis.
Great. Uh, thanks so much for calling in today. Uh, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Hey, I'm Pascal Chapuis, I'm a, um, resident of Mount Pleasant, yeah. Um, I'll be opposed to this proposition and I'll try to be short and blunt, uh, about it and why. Apologies in advance. Um, yeah, this project, I think, is wrong for its context, and the proof is in the pudding of needing to make, uh, an exception for it in the, in the amendment you had to work, to vote on just before, so not a good start, and I think you sensed it. Um, I'll be talking about the height component mainly, of course. Before I continue, I'd like to say that, um, uh, we love bright-side initiatives, we love the group and we need them, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that everything they draw or come up with is the right option. Um, and now I can see that the goal to replace all 36 units from the adjac- adjacent, um, building made them, I think, lose sight of the context of the surroundings, right? I think they look, they lost completely sight of the context, and it's way too tall, like everybody has said, has said. So, I don't think we should be blinded or hide behind the affordability concept and goodness and, and social housing and basically hide behind these to allow a tower to rise in the middle of Mount Pleasant, because that's really what we are doing. Um, it's completely out of context and, uh, almost twice as high as everything around. So that's all I have to say. I think we should ask, uh, council to simply send politely, diligently, bright-side back to the drawing board and, um, bring a new proposal, uh, for this parcel of two six-story options, low-rise, even if that means that some relocation will take place. But, um, we have to, to not be, uh, completely blind to, to, um, to what's happening here. So thank you for listening.
Thanks so much. Um, and that's it. There are no questions for you, sir, so appreciate you phoning in today. Um, just gonna make a second call, um, 1-833-353-8610. Participation code 44615 hashtag to get on the list, and that's on Twitter and on the live stream. Uh, clerks, do we have one, uh, do we have another speaker?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we have Speaker Cameron Robson.
Great. Uh, Cameron Robson, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, uh, honorable mayor and council, my name is Cameron Robson and I live at 311 E6 Avenue, just down the block from, uh, proposed development. Um, I'm seeking in opposition to the, uh, rezoning of, uh, 349 E6. Um, and while I recognize the need for social housing and do agree that more of it needs to be built to deal with the housing problems in Vancouver, uh, I believe it must be done with a delicate balance and not to place an undue burden on any one neighborhood. Um, to build a tower of 12 stories is definitely out of context with, with the neighborhood. Um, and so in the case of this, uh, the proposal is, uh, to replace a modest 3.5-story structure with 12 stories, which is, as many of the other speakers pointed out, um, twice the height of anything else in, in the neighborhood. Um, this is not a delicate balance. The, the size of the building will tower above any other building in the area. Uh, most of the buildings in its vicinity are three-to-six-story structures with only one building at seven stories. In fact, you have to go to the corridors at Main or Broadway to see any buildings of the size proposed. Um, so it begs the question, why would there be a proposal to put, uh, a tower in the middle of the residential neighborhood? Um, 12 stories is better suited for major corridors, uh, and not on a quiet residential street. Um, it will cover the view of the sky and it's gonna add traffic and parking issues. Um, so my opposition to the project is not to the project itself. Uh, I do believe in social housing. I believe that it's su- it's very important for, for Vancouver. But the problem is the height of the project. Um, if this is a six-story proposal, I would be in full support. Um, I believe that, like the last, uh, caller had, had made mention, that the, the idea that is social housing sort of trumps any other considerations to the character or context of the neighborhood and allows for, uh, development without any, any, you know, forethought as to what it's gonna do for, uh, the future of this, of this neighborhood. Um, as has been pointed out, the Lions development, which is in between our building at 311 and the proposed building, uh, will be then slated for redevelopment. And if we have a precedent of, uh, 12 stories sitting beside it, it will be very easy for the, uh, that, um, proposal to be another large building, which then would basically create a, a, almost a ghetto on the street. Um, the, it, it's poor planning by the city to allow such an unbalanced proposal to go forward. I, I walk around the neighborhood, I love my neighborhood, uh, as all the other proposed, uh, as, as other people, you know, called in, do. And I don't see any, any other building that's even close to this. Um, you know, there's nothing else even, even close. So it's hard to, it's hard to fathom what the city would be thinking in allowing a proposal of 12 stories to go forward. It's, 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 it's gonna decimate the, the block and it's gonna change the, the entire character and, and, uh, and feel of the neighborhood. Um, social housing is a community issue, problem that requires community acceptance to work. So dropping a massive development on the neighborhood that is well beyond the local building size will not create accept, acceptance. It will create anger and rejection of the new project and its tenants. You have to think about this. When these people move in, you have to, you have the whole neighborhood looking at them and thinking, you're the people who destroyed this neighborhood. So, and we don't want this. We want the, we want social housing to be, uh, a gentle, gentle blending so that people will accept it and, and, and the people in social housing will actually feel comfortable and, and welcome, which is what we wanna do with, with any new neighbors. Um, a well-thought-out social, uh, housing program requires integration, and that means building a structure that blends in with the neighborhood, not dominates it. Um, so my request is to please consider lowering ahead of this building and, uh, and, and, and ask the developers to come back with a more reasonable proposal that's within context, context of the community. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks so much for your time. Uh, there are no questions for you, so, um, I am gonna call a third and final time for speakers. Participation code 44615 hashtag to get on the list. And, uh, council, as always, uh, when we've called our third and final time, we're gonna take a five-minute break in order to enable people to call in. So I see it's 8:46 now. We'll come back at 8:51. So council, we'll see you in five. So Council, we'll see you in five.
Thank you for joining the teleconference.
8:51. Let's see, one, two, two counselors. Oh, I see, like, that's three. Four of us here. Great. Okay. Excellent. Thanks, Council. I'm gonna go over to clerks now and see if there's anybody else on the list.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and the first person on the list is Megan Colas.
Great. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for providing the opportunity to let us speak tonight. I am a resident of Vancouver. I live two buildings down from the proposed site, actually right next door to the seniors that this building is intended for. I wasn't planning on calling in tonight, but after hearing some of the speakers, I felt it was really important that I call in to voice my strong support for this project. I've been just incredibly disheartened that aesthetics and property values are being prioritized over housing members in our community, especially such vulnerable people within our city. And I don't think maintaining status quo is as important as ensuring we make our city as accessible as possible. This is a great opportunity to provide social housing to people who need it the most, in one of, in my opinion, the best neighborhood in Vancouver. I hope you'll vote in support of this project and thank you for, um, hearing me speak.
Mayor Stewart, I think you may be muted.
Yes, I did an amazing speech, all on mute. I'm gonna try it again. Counselor Weave, questions up to five minutes.
Great speech. Thanks for coming to speak today. I guess the issue we're having here is some people feel that there's a planning process that was in place, there's a community that came forward, and there's some aesthetic components that they're hoping to see. The proponent brought a nine-story forward and to fit with the community. So I guess the goal is not, do we need the housing? Because I think everyone agrees that affordable housing for seniors is incredibly important for people dealing with disabilities, but just kind of how we do our planning and how we ensure that we make the residents around feel like they're not gonna get booted out or they're not gonna lose their housing. So I'm, I'm wondering how you think we should grapple with that on a project like this.
That's a great question. Thank you for that. I think it's quite complex and, of course, it is important to take into account as many people's opinions as you can, especially within this neighborhood. I was really excited by this particular project because it pushes, it allows so many housing units within one site, which is quite unique for Mount Pleasant. And I really understand people's hesitancy around the height, but I think where we are in Vancouver with such an immense affordability crisis, it's more important at this point to put people's housing ahead of concerns around how, what it might look like. And I think in Vancouver, we tend to really prioritize neighborhood character, and I do appreciate that, but at a certain point, I think we really need to recognize the need for more housing over and above how it looks.
So, I mean, there are some people hoping that we could do both, and I think that's kind of the goal, but I really appreciate you coming to speak today.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thanks. That's it for questions for you. I'll ask the clerk if there are any other speakers.
Indeed, Mayor Stewart, we have the next speaker, Francois Robertson.
Okay, thanks so much. Go ahead, up to five minutes. Hi there, up to five minutes.
Oh, hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I own a condo on East Eighth, not far away, and I do love the neighborhood and the, the feel of the neighborhood. And I, whereas I do absolutely understand what the previous speaker was speaking about, about our need for affordable housing in the city, which is really quite dire, I think there has to be still a balance on the quality of, the quality of the neighborhood as well. I mean, I'm all for affordable housing. I am not for a residential tower of 12 stories in the middle of that neighborhood. I mean, those kind of towers should be along arteries, main streets. This is not that. I was actually quite surprised to hear that this was even being discussed. I always assumed that there would be like a, a discussion around putting in a six-story building, which is already like twice as high as any of its surrounding buildings. And it's not just about the look, whereas, yes, I personally am not in favor of like how the tower looks, but it's, but, but it's also like having only a few, few amount of parking spaces, having all those people, the density of it, what it would detract from the, the neighborhood in terms of just population and like a previous speaker had mentioned about like birds being affected and it, and it's not just, I don't think it's fair to put one neighborhood, like have a overburdened one neighborhood with a huge tower. And, and it seems like that is what's happening in, in, in this case. And I was really surprised to hear that there was only, I'm sorry, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but the, I think there was only 19 parking spots and like over 100 biking spots. Am I correct in that assumption? 19 parking spots for this building?
Yeah, just in this, through this process, we listen to your statements, but we, we don't answer questions. That's just, it's a possibility.
Oh, sorry. From my understanding, sorry. Okay, from my understanding, there was very, very, very few parking spots, and as much as we'd love to like get rid of our cars, there's residents still have them. We may not use them as much, but we still need a place to keep them when we do need them. So, I mean, it just seems that, and especially reading the Mount Pleasant Plan, which I read for the first time actually last week when this was, before this was put to today's date, it, it, it seems in complete opposition in what the plan was for, and, and I'm really not understanding why we do take taxpayers' money and the time and the energy to make plans for the future when they're not being adhered to. And again, I do understand that, like given certain circumstances, we do need to be a bit flexible, and like I said, I am all for affordable housing. I think six stories would be, you know, reasonable, but 12-story tower, not at all, not at all. I'm completely opposed to the 12 stories. So, thank you for listening and for time and energy in this project. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Clerks, do we have, thanks again. Clerks, do we have anybody else?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we do. We have Sarah Moffett on the phone.
Great. Please go ahead.
Point of, point of privilege, please, Mayor. Counselor Carr's texting me, she's having a difficulty getting online and wondering if, if somebody had tech over there. She's not getting any replies, so if somebody can help her get it back online.
Okay. Thanks so much. Please go ahead, Speaker. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thanks so much. So, thanks for the discussion this evening. It's been really fascinating to listen to everything. I live in the area. I purchased a flat here about five, six years ago because of the same sentiment as many other people that have spoken up about the area and the bumpy characteristics of it and the fact that there are no towers here. So yes, the height definitely scares me. But the one thing that no one really talked about this evening from any perspective is the environment. There, I need to talk about the crows. So if you laugh, that's fine, but listen, these Northwestern crows, about 20,000 across the Pacific coast, many fly over this area through Falls Creek, right down over low altitudes in Mount Pleasant to get to Still Creek. And that's, they do this every dawn and every dusk, every single day, 365 days a year, and they've been doing that for longer than buildings have been here. So my concern, for the sake of the environment, my shout-out tonight is for the speechless birds that bring us so much wonderful things to look at, and they also keep the infestations of beetles and any other rodent-type animals in the environment around the neighborhood, and that's a fact, and that's research, and that's science on websites that you can look at. So crows, if you start jacking up 12-story, 16-story buildings across this neighborhood, you will definitely affect the flight path of these birds. You could, as a result, end up with infestation and overgrowth of beetles and rodents in the area. Everything's connected. So that's my, that's my shout-out tonight. I appreciate you listening. And one last thing, you know, the person that came on a couple of speakers ago to talk about, you know, we shouldn't be concerned with aesthetics, listen, I'm all for social housing. You know, I'm, I'm almost 50 years old. I actually grew up in Toronto. I grew up in Erie City, Toronto. I'm definitely for social housing. But the taller you get in buildings and the more people you put in there that are having challenges in life, either socio-economically or in any area, it becomes a cooking pot for tension. So the best way to do that is to keep the buildings low, to integrate people, mixed income housing, not all one type of housing. And then you minimize and build, you minimize tension and you build a better community overall. It's not only about aesthetics, it is about community management and the environment. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You do have a question from Counselor Frye. Go ahead, Counselor Frye, up to five.
Thanks. Speaker, I really appreciate you bringing up the crows. Yeah, the crows are, of course, one of the smartest, especially our, our Pacific Northwest crows are among the smartest birds, smartest animals, and they're very adaptable. And as we know, a Still Creek environment has changed a lot. We've lost a lot of the trees there, but the crows have remained and they've, they've continued that flight path across east Vancouver from, at dusk and dawn. So, understanding that they're quite adaptable and probably able to figure out flying around a building, is that, would that mitigate some of your concerns around the impacts on crows and, and juxtaposing that with the, the, the benefits that this housing project will bring for folks who can't afford market?
Speaker, I think that was a question for you. Still on the line?
Yeah, still on the line, but the, the line cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Frye, did you wanna repeat your question?
The question, yeah, the question.
The gist being, crows are bright and adaptable and, and will likely figure out how to fly around a building. They certainly figured out how to adapt to the loss of trees at Still Creek. So my question is, do those, the understanding that crows will probably adapt, is that your primary concern? Are you, does it juxtap, how does it juxtapose with the provision of, of affordable housing for folks who need it?
Well, I don't think you totally heard my whole statement. It was also about the environment. The crows actually contribute to infestation management. So if you jack all these buildings up and they figure out how to fly around things, they, they're, they're not necessarily going to land in lower spaces, but there is more traffic, more cars on the street, higher buildings, more people, then they're gonna hang out in those places. So then you're risking other things coming up that are lower to the ground, like beetles, like rats, whatever they, whatever the crows keep in check on the ground in communities, within grassy, you know, old historical housing neighborhoods, that's definitely gonna be affected the more towers you put up. And, I mean, I just, you know, personally, I just don't trust developers, period. You know, you say, yeah, we're gonna do mixed income housing over here. It absolutely, like, we have to be honest with each other. It absolutely opens the door for everybody else to start sliding in development proposals for bigger buildings all across this neighborhood, which could happen over time if you say yes to one, the mixed income housing or not.
Okay. Gotcha. Thanks. Thanks so much. That's it for questions. I appreciate you calling in tonight. Clerks, I'm gonna ask, is there anyone else on the line?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we have Owen Bradley on the line.
Great. Owen Bradley, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a Vancouver resident and I'm strongly in support of this proposal. I lived down the block from a 12-story seniors' housing building myself. I think it was built well over 40 years ago, and I can see it right out of my balcony. It's in a neighborhood that's, in Grandview Woodland, it's in a neighborhood that's mostly three-story buildings or less. I can tell you it has no effect at all in my life. For me, it just does not really change the feel of the area compared to if there was another three-story building there. The neighborhood's great, and I think the residents of that tower contribute to the friendly atmosphere. It's a little more multi-generational that way. There's a lot of young people moving into my apartment building. I think this proposal is basically two blocks from a future Skytrain station. I don't think we want a lot of extra parking getting built so close to rapid transit, so I'm glad this is, this project is limited to what the nonprofit operator feels is needed. If anything, I really think this building is too short. I looked at the shadow study and it doesn't look like another six or 12 stories would have a lot of impact. Looking citywide between view cones and neighborhood character concerns, I think Vancouver's suffering a death of 1,000 cuts when it comes to affordability. I think most of us want Vancouver to be much more affordable, and that means we really need to be able to build somewhere. Thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thanks so much for calling in, and I'm just checking, I don't see any questions for you, so just wanna say thanks again for participating in our public hearing tonight. I'm gonna go to the clerks and just ask if you, are there anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, it is, excuse me, it is the clerk here. We have some listeners on the line, but I understand there are no further speakers.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much, clerks. So with that, we will close the speakers list, and as we receive few or little comments on this item after 5:00 PM today, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments and making a decision. So I'm gonna ask the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
Hi, everybody, it's William Azroff. I, I don't think so. I mean, I, I, I hear what the neighbors are saying, but I, I agreed with some of the comments around, you know, this is the kind of housing we need more of, and a building between two pretty major coming up Skytrain stations, I think this is the kind of housing we need, and I, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to present it. Thank you.
Thank you. How about staff? Any closing comments? Staff? Oh, you have staff there? Clerks, do we have any staff on the line?
Sorry, it's staff here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Did you have any? Did you have any closing comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Great. So, I'll go to council. Any further questions to staff? I don't see any. Oh, councillor Hardwick. There we go. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Yes, staff. We've heard repeatedly from the people that live in the area and people that participated in the Mount Pleasant community planning process, that they feel that, you know, they went through all this trouble to plan for the community, to look at it at a granular level, to determine where there were opportunities for greater height and density. And yet, here we are, looking at something that is disproportionate to a person. No one has an objection to the social housing composition, you know, but there is the constant concern around a 12-story building when, again, what I'm hearing is if it was six or eight or maybe even nine, there would be no objections. How do we reconcile, from staff's perspective, the, again, countless hours of volunteer contributions from the community to construct a community plan and then to just sideline it apparently because of this proposal? How do you reconcile that? And did you look at going back to the applicant and saying, well, what about eight stories or six stories or something that was more in keeping with the neighborhood and the guidelines of the community plan?
Over to staff.
Thank you for that question councillor. This is Paul Tang, senior development planner. When the Mount Pleasant plan was crafted, it was many years ago.
How many years ago?
Uh, I believe it was passed, apparently 10 years ago, actually.
Apparently?
It is, actually. Marcel is confirming to me right now it's been 10 years.
Councillor Hardwick, just let the staff finish.
No, I just needed to be specific. Thank you.
When that plan was crafted, there was one tenure available for city staff to craft the plan on, and that was based on ownership. There was no social housing funding coming from senior levels of government at the time. As such, it was very possible for staff to craft the plan with a very singular and predictable form of development for the neighborhood. However, we're in a different timeframe now. We have, we have a much bigger housing crisis than we did 10 years ago, and there is senior levels of funding right now. The Mount Pleasant plan did have one particular article in it which allows social housing projects to have higher levels of density and height within the area. And it is that clause that we are invoking to allow a building that is larger than what the regular zoning around it allows.
Okay, so what was that height?
Uh, the zoning allows 35 feet of height for condos. And as what we're experiencing now is that because there are different levels and different types of tenure now, there is a need for different levels of density and height to correspond to that in order for them to be viable. And so, I think for staff, our guess is that in the future, one singular predictable form of development in neighborhoods might not be something that we can deliver in the future.
Okay, so you think that a tenure plan is a long-term plan?
The tenure plan was likely based on the philosophy that ownership of condo was going to solve a housing crisis. And I think staff will have to say that that hasn't solved the housing crisis. In fact, it might actually have made it worse. So, yes, staff are playing within a limited field. And the field expanded now because there's senior levels of funding for social housing now. So, we're in a new field. And that's, that's the way I would like to characterize that kind of tension that we're feeling from us, all as citizens, about how we thought that we could get a singular form of development that was predictable and how sometimes it's not really panning out that way, only when it comes to social housing or for MRP units or for core need housing.
Just 10 seconds.
I've got no time left for this, but I'm not satisfied with that answer, although I am interested to hear that you think that the condo policy is, has actually exacerbated our affordability problems in Vancouver. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Councillor Weave, up to five minutes. Questions to staff?
Yeah, I guess my first question to staff is, there is a lot of other projects in development or in building phases as we speak. And I'm just, to help give context to some people, on Main Street, we have a 12-story, 10-story, and 11-story that will be built nearby. Is that correct? Within a couple of blocks?
Yes.
Yeah, and then down by the new train station with the Rubix Cube, it's a 15-story, a 14, and a 13. Is that correct? So, we've got some density.
Correct.
Okay. It's just difficult because you didn't see that in some of the presentations today, that there is some density of relative sites in the area. It's just not on this block.
Just councillors, just remember, this is our kind of questions and then we need to close, move the motion and then we can move into debate.
Okay. I guess the next question is, recognizing that the Mount Pleasant community plan talked about a hillside community, how does this project fit in with that look? And then the next question would be, you said that by moving the building further to the east, it would benefit neighboring properties. And can you explain what that means?
Uh, for your, to answer the first question, the hillside community was part of this, a particular urban design concept for Main Street mainly with respect to those larger buildings that you were speaking of councillor. And, and the terracing of those buildings would reflect the change in topography of that, of that hilly landscape. This particular building, I guess I could say that it could contribute to that in terms of varying silhouettes of buildings within the RM4 area. And to answer your second question, by creating a larger setback from the shared property line, it increases a lot more spatial separation between this building and the building to the west. And furthermore, it would create, it would actually have a spatial separation for any redevelopment of that property to the west should it redevelop as well.
Okay, so this, the moving this building closer to the street and further from the shared property line allows the property that's going to be swapped to be, have an ability to better develop.
Yeah, that's right. And what it also allows, allows is a lot of extra slots of sunlight through the, through the site and onto the neighboring properties to the north and even to the east and west.
Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate this work.
Thanks councillor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And I actually don't have questions. I just put my name on the list to move the motion if there aren't further questions from council.
I know there's a couple of councillors who are having trouble with WebEx. So, I'll just ask if there are questions from those councillors before I...
Sure.
I don't hear anything, so I'm going to, yes, so motion moved. Do we have a seconder? Anybody? Yeah, Frye. Thank you. Thanks councillor Frye. Okay, so I'm going to move this over to a debate queue. Councillor Boyle, you can, you've moved it. So, if you want to start, please go ahead.
Sure. And I am happy to speak in support of this project. I think was articulated really well right at the end, that this is more of the kind of housing that we need. In particular, that it's non-market, that it's accessible, that it's posing for seniors and people with disabilities, that it's close to transit and amenities. I actually think that it's really important that more of this type of housing is off arterial, particularly in buildings that are designed to welcome seniors and people with disabilities, to have homes that are off of the air pollution of major arterials is important. And I would add, that's important for everyone, but particularly glad to see this building off of an arterial. And I guess I want to point out in the tension around the height, that for me, where that lands is that if this building were shorter, it would provide fewer homes to people who need them. And so, I'm comfortable with the trade-off of the 12 stories of height because this is housing that we need and that will be an important home for people who need it. And I, in closing also, just want to say a big thank you to Brightside for the thought that they clearly put into the support to their tenants and the planning that went into making sure that there would be a place for tenants to move and avoid unnecessary disruption. All of that is evident in this plan. And I know it is challenging. And as we look at the redevelopment of non-market housing and hopefully an increase in non-market housing across the city, figuring out those sorts of transition is really, transitions is really important. And so, I appreciate the thought that went into this particular situation and, as I said, supportive of this, these homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Weave?
Yeah, I was intrigued that they're performing about a nine-story building that had the same density and would provide the same housing. I think the housing is critical for the neighborhood. I think having accessible housing, recognizing that the elevator in my building has about a four-inch gap, which means that my mom can't visit me sometimes because we are in a lot of older stock in the neighborhood. So, to have accessible housing that is meeting the affordability needs is critical. It's something that we really wanted in the plan to ensure we had a mixed level of housing. Recognizing that there is going to be a lot of buildings of similar height in the area, I think that it is going to have a fit. I do wish that there's an opportunity for us to really look at how we do our community planning. As someone that sat on meetings for hours and hours doing sticky notes at the native educational center and others, and then really kind of just getting shut out and our terms of reference ending and one of the reasons why I ran for city council, I think there's an opportunity to keep that dialogue going and recognizing that community plans need to be organic and need to be continuing evolving. It can't be a stale document that sits on a desk and gets pulled out 10 years later because, like staff said, things have changed and things are going to continue to change. And the community wants to be involved in what that looks like. So, I know we're in the middle of a city planning process and trying to figure out how we can make projects more seamless so that developers know what the community is looking for and they can help deliver those needs, that these processes can be a little less divisive and more formidable and more kind of positive as we continue to grow the city that everyone's hoping to get. I do like the extra green space. I do like extra light. I think it's a clean, simple building. I think the design in that sense makes a lot of works with the block. I like the use of the brick. And so, I will be supportive of this project, recognizing that it's followed our processes. It's delivering some of the housing we really need in the city of Vancouver. If it also does show that, from someone that's been part of this process since 2010, there is a lot of opportunity for us to find ways to better engage with our residents throughout the process of design.
Thanks councillor Weave. Just before I move on, councillor Boyle, you moved this motion. Did you mean to move it with the yellow memo?
Yes, Mayor. Thanks for that clarification. I did mean to move it with the yellow memo.
And councillor Frye, you meant to second it with the yellow memo?
I certainly did. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks. Okay. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I think we have to support this project because the need for housing is so great. I think when you talk about the feel of a neighborhood versus the need, the absolute need of people for affordable housing, that affordable housing has to trump that. I think it's good that the trees are going to be staying there because that'll still give the same feel, even though the building is tall. Hopefully, we'll, people walking by will see the trees before the building. So, yeah, I think it's great. The best thing about this building, in my opinion, is the affordability. I'm sure that the walls next door have something in mind that will make them a nice profit. I'm kind of leery of what that is. But in the meantime, I think we have to go ahead with this affordable housing.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm a big fan of Brightside. I think they've been doing a tremendous job in providing affordable housing and seniors' housing throughout the city for a great many years. But I am disturbed by this project and mostly because of the fact that it has not respected the Mount Pleasant community plan. Now, there's a reason that we have community plans and we involve the community, and that is, is, you know, precisely to give us guidance because change is the only constant. And everyone that's saying, well, things are changing, well, of course, they're changing and that's why we plan. People didn't plan to keep this neighborhood the same, but they did set out conditions that, that they felt were appropriate and changes that, and accommodating change well over a decade, decades seem to be less and less time from my viewpoint. So, I really would have liked to have seen some alternative approaches in terms of height. Height seems to be the biggest stumbling block. And there, you know, there are other forms that could be taken, and I'm just not convinced that enough work has been done. And anything that comes back to me and uses the Housing Vancouver Strategy targets as justification, I'm going to look at, you know, with a raised eyebrow until we have some more firm numbers that support the assertions that are, are being treated as if they're, you know, de facto truth when we really don't know for sure where we're sitting. And we certainly don't know in the middle of this pandemic what the impacts are going to be on our housing going forward. So, really torn. Again, I have huge respect for Brightside and I appreciate the difficulties and the complexities of making the numbers work. I know we're all grateful as we're seeing other levels of government stepping up and taking a more meaningful role in providing for affordable housing in a spectrum of different housing typologies. But to just disregard the efforts of a community plan and just say, oh, well, that was then, this is now, just doesn't cut it for me. Enough said. Thank you.
Thanks so much. We've got councillor Dominado next.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks to staff, the applicant, as well as to all the residents who called in to speak on this project. It's probably similar reflections to my colleagues. Really appreciate this project because Brightside is really a respected and proven partner and housing provider in the city, and I think it's really important to recognize that. Obviously, we don't simply judge things on the merit of an organization, but I do think a really strong track record makes a difference when these projects come forward. Secondly, the subject of non-market housing, councillor Swanson spoke to the, why she really likes this project and the affordability in it, and I would agree with her. Financing non-market housing is incredibly challenging, and I speak from the experience of being with a nonprofit housing provider for years on the board. And I think we all know that in terms of not only the need, but also these projects can be on the books for years. It can take sometimes seven to 10 years. So, we have some challenges there. So, I really applaud sort of the creativity here around the land swap and the partnership with Brightside BC Housing, the private sector, and making this come to fruition. And I certainly agree with councillor Weave. I heard the concerns of the residents around largely, as councillor Hardwick said, the height. But agree with councillor Weave that we need to find a way going forward to make our neighborhood plans or community plans more nimble. And I love, I love how you framed that as being more organic so that we can adapt as our circumstances change and to do that more quickly over time. And then lastly, I would say, also really appreciate the ability through this proposal to not displace the residents, they'll be able to stay in their homes until the new building is built. This is one of the things that the, the school sector has tried to do in Vancouver with building new schools and being creative so that you have space for kids to go to. But similarly, that these residents will be able to stay in their existing homes and then move into the new building. And I think that's a real positive of this and takeaway. And you can't, you can't always do that with housing projects in the city. And so... in the city, and so, um, I, I think it's fantastic, um, uh, proposal and happy to support it.
Thanks so much, uh, councillor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, uh, also happy to support this project and, uh, grateful for the comments, actually, uh, well, first off, I, I do want to acknowledge the great work that Brightside does, I've really been impressed with, uh, um, they consistently deliver projects that are below market and that are really meeting a need, and it, it's, it's quite magical what they're, what they're doing actually, because I think they're, they're quite leaders in the, in that field as far as actually delivering that affordable housing that we are so desperate for in the city of Vancouver, so I want to acknowledge that, I also want to acknowledge the work that, that our staff have put in on this and, and acknowledge all the people who came to speak to it. Uh, and I was really grateful for some of the comments of councillor Weeb, given that he has a lot of experience, he's boots on the ground, he's been in that neighborhood for a long time, he participated in the local neighborhood plan, uh, and, and has a really sort of grounded perspective on what's going on there. But, uh, the one thing that I, I just really wanted to touch on, and I'm super supportive of this, but what struck me, and I was, I was grappling with it for a while, and it was, it was the, the, the treatment of this building, it's sort of a, a, a return to what we see in the West End, so, uh, the West End has that sort of narrower tower form with a lot of sort of generous garden treatment around it, and that's what I think has made the West End such a fantastic success of like low, mid-rise buildings, and then taller, older towers that have nice generous gardens and trees and, and, and that kind of thing around it, and I see that replicated in this design, and I really think that that's an important highlight piece because I, I think that the West End has, you know, the, 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 the way the West End developed density has been, you know, really, uh, a model for lots of density development throughout North America, and I think they did it well, they've done it well, and I think that classic approach that was deployed in the West End could be very well-suited to, to this kind of treatment that we're seeing right now with this Brightside project, and I really just want to highlight and, and show some gratitude to the, the architects who have pulled this together with that specific piece in mind, because I frankly find that, uh, the, the typical sort of, uh, podium pedestal style kind of approach that we've been doing with a lot of the Vancouverism stuff is a little played out, and I really appreciate this, this sort of variety of the style and the really sort of garden park approach to, to the tower vernacular, so happy to support this, I think it's a great project and it's going to do a lot of good for a lot of folks.
Thanks, uh, councillor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just also, first of all, on, on a point of privilege, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that I had been listening to the speakers and had sent that over to the clerk. Um, uh, certainly, yeah, I had some technical difficulties myself just a few moments ago, so bear with me if you lose me, but I will try and, and, uh, and be brief. Um, I also, I appreciate all of the speakers, it's a lot of time, I understand, uh, to wait to speak and to inform yourself about a project. However, as we consider housing across the spectrum, and I talk about this often at council, I think that we have to look at opportunities, uh, where we, we can support, uh, not only social housing, but integrated housing within communities, and I think not only does Brightside do an excellent job of that, uh, but it is about integration as a former liaison to both the Persons with Disabilities Advisory Committee and the Seniors Advisory Committee, uh, certainly across, uh, terms and for decades, uh, that's what we've heard from seniors, um, in the city, uh, reading back to the old minutes even of those meetings, uh, or of old, older housing strategies. Projects like this, um, as has been noted before, may have been planned, uh, but could have been filled two, three, four times over by the time that they're actually delivered, um, you know, especially when we're considering, um, how many homes, uh, that will be provided here, eighty-two specifically, um, looking at that number in the neighborhood, uh, for social housing, but also I think it's important to consider the accessibility, um, of, of the neighborhood itself as well, um, and, and that is that Mount Pleasant's a very accessible neighborhood, close to transit, close to community center. And I just wanted, um, I, again, so much has been said and don't want to belabor my comments because my Wi-Fi connection's not looking so great here, but, uh, just wanted to say thank you and note that I would be supporting this.
Thanks, uh, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you, um, I will be very brief in my comments, um, and just say that it is always a bright spot when Brightside comes forward with a project to council, because they do achieve some of the deepest levels of affordability for some of the much needed housing in the city, and I appreciate that, um, for this one, and I'm sensitive to the concerns in the neighborhood. Excuse me, but, um, with seventy-three percent senior housing or sixty approximately of the eighty-two units, um, I'm increasingly concerned about the vulnerability of seniors, um, who are living on low resources in our city, um, and that that is only going to continue to, um, to sort of become more salient and, and more of a worry, and exacerbate as the population grows and, um, affordability, um, decreases, and, and that sort of inverse correlation is really worrying, uh, because these are folks that are most vulnerable and they're the ones that, you know, we really need to be looking after, so those are very compelling, uh, points to me, um, and I really do appreciate sort of the concerns around the, from the neighbors, but I do think, um, to echo some of the other comments, that the retention of the trees and sort of the landscaping setback, um, will hopefully help to alleviate that and feel that it does, um, sort of integrate into the neighborhood, um, in a, in a sort of a, a softer way than people might anticipate, um, and hopefully I'm sure that, um, as that work gets executed, that, um, the applicant will be sensitive to hearing that that sort of, um, that key part of the proposal was, was important, um, in terms of respecting the neighborhood context, but, um, it, it, it's really important housing, and hearing, uh, my last point would be that, hearing that, um, from the applicant that they were successful in securing, um, housing, um, support from BC Housing's Community Housing Fund to deepen the affordability, um, in terms of being able to offer, um, you know, fifty percent at rent gear to income and, um, the additional twenty percent at shelter, uh, really does, um, I think speaks to the, the overall value proposition being really important, um, in terms of some of our most needed housing, so for those reasons, I will support it, thank you.
Thanks so much, um, I don't see anybody else on the list, so I...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me, it's councillor Carr here.
I can councillor Carr.
Yes, I'm sorry, um, I don't have internet problems, so my computer died, so I am calling in by phone, and I have been listening this whole time, so I would like to make some summary comments, please.
Okay, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yep, okay, thank you very much, um, so I think there are three key issues here for me, um, one is around the plan itself in this neighborhood, um, secondly, the issue that many people have raised, which is the height, because that, that is a raise, and the third is around affordability. So, in terms of the plan, um, I really appreciate so much, um, the comments made by councillor Weeb, who was involved with the plan, um, which, which really was a thoughtful comment around how plans need to be organic and continuous and responsive, um, and evolving, and I, I very much appreciate that because it, I think it would be wrong of any, um, of, of any city to think a plan that is put in place would stay static when situations change, and we are in a changing situation, and this neighborhood is in a changing situation, uh, especially in terms of the transit, um, and increased transit opportunities that are coming to it. Um, I also want to note that the plan did say higher heights, um, could be, um, accommodated for social housing, and, uh, this is the case, it may not have been specifically mentioned in the area, you know, pinpointed, but, but definitely this is a case where there is social housing, um, uh, with deep affordability and, um, and, uh, you know, I think there is a general direction in the plan regarding that, as well as the fact that one block to the west of this, as the, as the, um, staff report notes, uh, the, uh, Mount Pleasant Plan does allow for thirteen stories. In terms of height, I really appreciate the comments that were made by councillor Frye. I'm a West Ender, I think the West End bought it right, we are one of the highest density neighborhoods in all of North America, and it has such an incredible neighborhood feel, and it's because the towers are separated, um, and many of them are slim, there is a lot of gardening, um, and wonderful, you know, street trees, um, and there is a mix of the old and the new. Um, I remember when the speaker's talking about, um, the older homes and the older buildings nearby, that is the beauty of the West End, isn't it, it's the beauty of a neighborhood as it evolves over time. Um, so for me, the, the staff report again noting that the towers, uh, beings are the towers, you know, I come from the West End, so, you know, it's, you know, lot higher than twelve stories, uh, but, um, the fact that this would cast minimal shadowing and not on the buildings because of the, uh, construction of the tower, I think is, um, is well worth noting. Um, thirdly, around affordability, you know, I have to again, like, um, everyone else that has come before me, mention the fact that Brightside has done such a remarkable job, and I, I can't help but saying, you know, really, when do we get, uh, something landing on the council table that has twenty percent of the units at deep subsidy, fifty percent, and I, and you know, and I have seen some of their, I've, you know, talked to people, um, in Brightside Accommodation that say, uh, some, it, the, the rents are three hundred dollars a month, four hundred dollars a month, it's, it's actually phenomenal. Fifty percent at rent geared to income and thirty percent at affordable market rent, and this is what we are yearning for in the city of Vancouver, to meet the needs of people who have incomes that require that kind of level of subsidy and, and, and rent in order to, to have their lives be affordable. So, it really is for those three reasons that I am really happy to be able to support this project.
Great, thanks so much, uh, that's it for the list, so I'm calling the vote. Clerks, if you could trigger the vote, that would be great.
And Mr. Mayor, a point of privilege, vote assist, please.
Yep.
In favor.
Thank you very much, councillor Carr. The clerks could, there we go. Okay, council, uh, thanks so much, that has passed with none in opposition, that's the clerk's going to flip that up on the screen, um, I think that's it, so, uh, just before we have a motion to adjourn, of course, I want to thank the staff for all their work, the, uh, the, the applicant who put this, uh, great proposal forward, uh, for the clerks for doing all their work tonight and all through the year, and, uh, and thank you, council, for all your work, especially this week, it's been a long one, and this is the end, so, uh, after we adjourn, we'll see you back in January, uh, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you councillor Hardwick, thank you councillor Dejanova, all in favor, say yay.
Yay, and happy holidays.
Yes, I don't hear any names, so I think that's adjourned. Great.
Happy holidays.
Happy, happy Christmas.
What a year, what a year.
Thank you, everyone, thank, yes, thanks, everybody.
See ya.